Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
And good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Work Council Workshop Session, June 24th, 2025. Meeting is called to order. We'll conduct a roll call attendance. Councilmember Baldinegra. Councilmember Conchas.
Present.
Councilmember Guzman.
Here.
Councilmember Melner.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Turner. Vice Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Baldinegra.
Here.
And I'm present. So with that, we do have a quorum. If you'll go ahead and move our items, we're going to hear item seven first. Number seven will be first. With that, if you'll go ahead and move that.
Council item of special interest, Velmatig Library.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Today's first item, number seven, will be led by Kimberly Hall, our Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we will be presenting on the CIOSI for Velmatig Library. I have Don Farrow, Deputy Director of Libraries, and Michelle Watanco, Director of Field Operations, who will be presenting today. At the request of the council, we sought recommendations from the Library Advisory Board regarding Velmatig Library. Since there are new Library Advisory Board members, we presented the external studies conducted and the results of the community surveys that have been completed. This allowed them to ask questions, share ideas, and bring forward their recommendation, which Don will share with you. I'd also like to acknowledge we have two board members in the audience today, Vice Chair Tosh and Board Member Bro. Thank you for being here. Our goal today is to present analysis from external studies, including national research, community assessment results, and infrastructure concerns, as we have new council members who may not be familiar with this information. We'll then ask for consensus on the Library Advisory Board's recommendation and ask for your recommendations and next steps. Ms. Farrow?
Perfect. Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this first slide is, just as our director alluded to, we wanted to give background to some new Library Advisory Board members, as well as a refresher for our existing members. So in 2022, I wrote a grant for $50,000, and we were awarded that full amount from the Library Services and Technology Act, or LSTA, and that gave us an opportunity to contract with Works Bureau and Rethinking Libraries Consultants to conduct a community assessment survey. So this study included the following analytical and information gathering exercises. So as you can see in the bold, I know it's very hard to read, benchmark in 10-year analysis, collection utilization and demographic analysis, a community survey, and community, staff, stakeholder engagement meetings, followed by facility assessments. And the end result is trying to bring light to opportunities for each of our four branches, and really having an outsider's perspective to try to address deficiencies and desires learned through community engagement and facility analysis. And while I don't expect anybody to read all of these lines, this is how we were benchmarked, who we were benchmarked against as an overview. So Glendale Public Library was benchmarked against 50 different libraries across four separate cohorts. The light blue on top represents Arizona libraries, and if you can't read any, there are libraries such as Tempe, Scottsdale, and Chandler, just to name a few. The yellow represents West and Southwest libraries, so you'll see libraries from California, Utah, and Colorado. The next slide represents, the green, are National Libraries, so that would be considered anywhere that is not West or Southwest, such as areas in Tennessee, Ohio, Florida, and North Carolina. The purple indicates the aspirational libraries, which are identified by the Library Star Journal as high-performing U.S. public libraries, both in relation to their past performance and compared to the performance of other libraries. While a comparison analysis was done across a variety of different metric areas, all libraries are roughly in the same population range as Glendale Public Library. So the community assessment survey results. So we had an open survey between March 21st, 2022, and April 30th, 2022. We had a total of 1,013 respondents to the survey. And just to break that down, we know that a lot of our library patrons really do prefer paper over electronic surveys, so we collected 830 online surveys and 174 were completed on paper. The two pie charts above reflect the survey respondents' districts and ages. We wanted to make sure that there was a really good representation, and by looking at those pie charts, it does show pretty good representation across the board. Engagement sessions, on the other hand, we tried several different avenues. We had different times of day. We had sessions in the evenings. We held them both in libraries and off-site. And while we have library users who may have heard about it, there was not very much attendance-wise, and I'll get into the promotion that we did to try to entice people to come to our engagement sessions. But for example, we held one session at the Glendale Adult Center and did not have anybody show up to participate. The Heroes Regional Park Library, zero people came to participate. And what we tried to do, besides a community center and other areas, was try something new, a Facebook Live event using the skillset of the Glendale 11 Team. And we held that at Main Library as like a finale to our community engagement. We had one member in the audience, and that was a Library Advisory Board member. And according to the Glendale 11 Team, there were 68 virtual attendees, but there were zero questions asked. So I give kudos to the Glendale team for keeping that Glendale Live session flowing. In addition to the survey, overall assessment also included stakeholder engagements, as I mentioned, at the community center, all four libraries, the Adult Center, the Facebook Live Event, and then that also included interactions, one-on-ones with various city council members, Assistant City Manager, City Manager, and Mayor. So when we look at the total number of responses, to be statistically significant, we needed 384 responses, so based on the size of the City of Glendale community. The consultants verified that we had enough to be statistically significant. And then, important to note, this was an observation of our consultants, it's always more difficult to reach non-users and underserved populations because they may not be using your library and you don't know how to market to them. According to our consultants, there was a significant number that was able to be reached that self-identified on our surveys. So that is definitely a good thing. For the Velmatig Library Assessment, although all four of our libraries were assessed, this slide solely represents the assessment findings for the Velmatig Library. Feedback gathered through a combination of input from community engagement meetings, staff meetings, which all of the results were held separately, online and paper surveys, and consultant assessments. This slide is focused on categories of performance, service, and experience, and not necessarily towards issues based on physical condition, with the caveat unless they impact the user experience. So the bullet points on the left are some of the categories that were assessed, such as library accessibility, for example, parking, do you have adequate delivery, what is your pedestrian access, library visibility, can you tell it's a public library, is there a monument sign, is it recognizable and identifiable? Interior public and service spaces, those would be things like our library collection, print materials, where we have our computers, do we have study rooms or meeting rooms? Technology, it could be PC, public computers, tablets, it could also be, can you access Wi-Fi from your personal device? Staff areas, are they functional, are they flexible, can you change, just like the front of the house over time, to accommodate your staff needs? Experiential considerations, which would be things like aesthetics, like finishes and furnishings, and even interior lighting. And then, this one's pretty self-explanatory, vistas, views, and outdoor spaces. Are you letting that natural light come in, and do you have scenic views of the outdoors to bring the outdoors in? So let's see here. This concludes the information on the 2022 Velmatig Library Facility, knowing that for this branch only, the pie chart on the right represents all of the findings collated into one number, so instead of giving you all the individual ratings for those various categories, this is the overall calculation of 3% was considered good in the blue, adequate is 26%, which is kind of a rust color, inadequate was 39% in the gray area, and poor was considered 32%, and it's kind of a mustard yellow. Those are the findings there. So now, we're going to fast-forward to 2024. The library contracted with Polco to independently administer a survey. 3,000 households were randomly selected, and specifically in the Acotillo and Cactus districts. The reason for this is they account for 54% of all of the Velmatig Library act of circulation. The surveys were available in both English and Spanish, and in addition to the address-based respondents, an open participation survey was also made available to anybody who wanted to participate, including non-Glendale residents. So the pie chart shows the blue, 57, 57 address-based responses were received. The residents received an initial survey, asking them to participate, to give us very valuable feedback. And then, a second reminder postcard was also mailed out. If you haven't had a chance, please, you know, take the time to fill out the survey, and also, please do not enter the information twice. The 145 represents the open participation responses, and these were a couple of the findings on the right. Some of the reasons that were identified for not regularly visiting the Velmatig Library, based on the 57 address-based respondents, lack of time, lack of interest, inconvenient location, and being unaware of its existence. According to the open participation feedback, they listed inconvenient location and lack of time. The main source of information about Velmatig Library is also helpful, is our marketing and social media efforts working, how are we promoting and publicizing not only our programs, but how to participate in surveys like this. So the Glendale webpage was identified as one of the top ways to receive information about the Velmatig Library. And for example, on our page now, under News, the Velmatig Relocation FAQ page has been up since October 22nd of 2024, and has been viewed 807 times. The eLibrary newsletter goes out to over 40,000 subscribers twice each month, and word-of-mouth was another way to get the word out about maybe family programs and other special events. One of our Library Advisory Board members had a really great question. You've mentioned the surveys were available in English and Spanish. How many self-identified or shared that information on how they perceive themselves or consider themselves? So 51% of the address-based sample and 35% of the open respondents consider themselves to be Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin.
Hold up a second. Did you have a question right now?
No, I didn't.
No, okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is what I really wanted to make sure was communicated to the Library Advisory Board members, especially again with new members and existing members as a refresher. This is how library staff marketed and promoted what the efforts were made to get the word out about the Polco survey, so that we would have as many respondents from all across the board. It was featured in our library website and the News and Events homepage. The Library e-newsletter is the top row. It was delivered to over 41,000 patrons that sign up to receive that e-newsletter. The second bar, which is kind of like that rust color, it shows through analytics that it was opened over 23,000 times, and then, as the final follow-up, the survey link was clicked on 40 times. It's supposed to be blue, but if the number's small, you're not really going to see that blue line, which is the third down. Direct email, when you sign up for a library card, your home branch is identified, so we were able to reach out directly to email patrons that identified as Velmatig Library patrons. So that was delivered to over 42,000, 42,000, I'm sorry, I apologize, 4,200 contacts. It was opened over 2,000 times, and the survey was clicked on 194 times. Nextdoor is something we've been trying, again, to get the word out. So according to our marketing and social media administrative librarian, at the time, there were 84,000 Glendale subscribers to Nextdoor. It went out to everybody, and it was opened over 2,000 times, almost 3,000 times, but we do not have the analytics on how many went to the survey as a result. And then, finally, we have our Facebook promotion. Not only did we work with the city's social media staff member, C.C. Romero, to help push this out through City of Glendale's social media pages, we did a paid Facebook post. It went to over 4,500, it was viewed by almost 1,500, and as a result, the survey link was clicked 36 times. We wanted to keep this separate because this was specifically regarding the 2024 Velmatig Library Community Forum meeting, and we wanted to, again, do as much social media and marketing. So that was included in the Library e-newsletter. 41,000 received it, almost 16,000 viewed it. The direct mail, again, to Velmatig Library patrons, almost a 50% return, 4,200 received it, over 2,000 opened it and viewed it. Nextdoor, that same number of folks registered for Glendale, 84,000, it was sent out to 84,000, 2,233 viewed it. Forum participants completed a dot-poll exercise at this Velmatig Library Community Forum meeting, and I wanted to identify their top five priorities. For a dot-poll exercise, they were given one green dot to say this is my highest priority, followed by three dots of another color to say this is equally important, but not my top priority. So the five priorities that were identified at the Velmatig Library Community Forum, number one was outdoor gathering spaces, number two was a computer lab, number three was arts and cultural exhibits, number four was meeting rooms, and number five was one-on-one assistance with things like technology, research, and homework help. And just, if I can go back, I apologize, just to note, with all of the promotion, publicity, e-newsletter, direct mail, Nextdoor, the total attendance for the Velmatig Community Forum that was held from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on the 19th of September, 2024, was a total of 20 folks. We did, at the beginning of the meeting, could you raise your hand if you're currently a Velmatig Library user, and the majority of the folks in attendance did not identify as a Velmatig Library user? So what we did for this community forum, we also wanted to give our Library Advisory Board the same opportunity to participate in the dot-poll exercise. So their top five results are as follows. Number one was meeting rooms, number two, early childhood play space, number three, study rooms, number four, computer lab, and number five, outdoor gathering space in a tie with one-on-one assistance for the homework, research, et cetera. But what's important to note here is Velmatig Library is the only one of our four libraries that does not have a bookable meeting room space or a single study room. So these are things that we're seeing, and on the previous slide, they didn't note, but study rooms did rank sixth for the Community Library Forum. So as directed per city council direction, staff presented this background information PowerPoint to the Library Advisory Board on May 14th, 2025, and the recommendation of the board was preliminary mock-ups requested specifically for options one and four. And that's going to be on the next slide, which is option one, to renovate the existing library in place, and option number four, which is to relocate to the promenade. So with that said, I am going to turn it over to Michelle Watanco.
Thank you, Don. So, Mayor and Council, you did see this slide in October of 2024, and this was presented to the Library Advisory Commission. And just to remind you, so option zero was to maintain the existing building, that's to do nothing but keep the building in its current footprint operational as it is today, that's infrastructure only, no changes to the footprint, no new amenities, no new equipment, no new furniture. So under that, option zero, maintain existing, that's $2024, so pretty much current year dollars, $5 million, just to maintain the existing. And as we get into the others, option one, which is renovate the existing in $2024, the consultant estimated to be $12.9 million. So we have to escalate that, and that was done by a professional company that does a cost estimating escalation, and so we escalated it to 27, 28, when we might actually be doing the renovation. And then, the line underneath that is the maintenance needed before 2028. That is specific to the air conditioning system, the HVAC system, the electrical and the roof, and on the next slide, I'll go into some of the current conditions and issues we're having with the building. Option three, new in the park, again, very same format, they estimated $13.1 million to do a new build in the park, escalation, and then maintenance needed. And then, the option for to move to the promenade was approximately $8 million, and that does include then, you know, the $500 for the demolition and asbestos remediation, because as that building comes down, you do have to do those, the asbestos remediation before you do that, and then approximately $1.5 million to add those amenities back in the park. You don't want to just leave it as a blank slate. So this is what was presented to council and the Library Advisory Board to go through what the different options were and the costs associated with them. What we're currently seeing today.
Michelle, hold on one second. I have a question for you. It's a council member.
Just very quickly, you said that includes, option three includes the $500,000, doesn't have an asterisk by option three. Option four does. So does that include the $500,000 and the $1.5 to improve the park?
Option three does as well, yes. But just with the promenade being identified as a tenant improvement, the TI, we wanted to highlight that there. There was the demolition, the asbestos, but what it doesn't have in option three is the increased park scope. Or, hang on, I'm correcting myself, it does have that. It's all in there. So that's the difference between them.
All right. Question's over here, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So does option, you said option three does not include the increased park scope?
Option three does include the increased park.
It does include.
That was a mistake on my part.
Does option four include the increased?
Option four, option three and four, new build in the park and the promenade TI, include the asbestos remediation, which you have to do before demolition, the demolition and the increased park scope.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And if I could, so option zero, though, if one of the other options was chosen, becomes unnecessary, right? I mean, even the spend, other than just, you know, duct tape and Band-Aids, if we decide we're going to move, you know, option, especially with option three or four, investing $5 million five million dollars into the existing library when we know it's going to be demoed would not be part of the story, is that right?
So Mayor and Council, and that's what I wanted to talk about, there's a cost to do nothing. That building is in a facilities perspective right now, not in a great condition. Can we go to the next slide? So we are seeing some stressors with that, with that building. This is our current cooling tower out back. One shows the front side of it, the other shows the backside. It's in, it's showing severe signs of aging. So we do have to spend money on this building. We do have to do some work to improve the infrastructure. I think, and Don and Kimberly can correct me, if I remember correctly, over the past two weeks, there's been six times where we've had to, on an emergency basis, send a HVAC technician over to the Velmatig Library to keep this system itself up and operational. So what we're seeing here in these pictures is significant rusting on the exterior, and this is on the hatchways, but it's also happening on the interior. And what's happening in the cooling tower is that you have these series of coils and water moves through them, but we're seeing over time the sedimentation associated with the water and then just the corrosion. We're getting rusting inside, corrosion inside, as well as the outside. And this piece of equipment is being essentially nursed along to keep it operational. And what you'll actually see on tonight's council agenda with Mesa Energy Systems, there's a request to ratify three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars approximately to replace this piece of equipment. So there are costs that we have to spend at Velmatig today, and will have to, regardless of if we do option one or three in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we have to spend money on this building to keep it up and operational. And it's mainly the things like the air conditioning system, which are not going to last until, you know, the three more years. So it's three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars tonight that's being presented. We also had a significant sewer line issue. We recently put a clean out in the sewer line so that we could keep the sewer line open. We camered the line and we're seeing significant issues with it. And so we're looking at lining that versus replacing the entire line. And we're estimating, we don't have costs on it yet, but that should be about three-hundred thousand dollars, too.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're talking really fast. How many?
Approximately three-hundred thousand for the sewer line as well, to line the sewer line. But again, I'm waiting on cost for that. That's just a high-level engineer's estimate on that one. But that's why we're saying there's a cost to maintaining the building today, so we can keep it up and operational.
Okay, but my question was, is the intention to spend the five million dollars or to do duct tape and Band-Aids to get across the finish line with one of these other? Obviously, you have to keep the library open and operational, but you said three-hundred thousand, does that, does that basically at least what's wrong with the chillers now? Does that fix what's wrong with the chillers? I understand it's old and rusty and all of that, but spending five million dollars on a building that's going to be demoed doesn't seem like a wise investment to me.
Mayor, councilmembers, Vice Mayor, I would agree with you. And if you would go back to that last slide, you'll see in option one and option three, there's the last line there before we hit the total is maintenance needed before 2028. And we're estimating about two-point-four million dollars, of which the six-hundred thousand I just mentioned will be part of that. But that would be to keep the entire air conditioning system, the HVAC system. I talked, the cooling towers is three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. There might be other components. The electrical is also in need of repair. The roof is also in need of repair. We wouldn't spend that money proactively. I wouldn't authorize staff and I wouldn't ask council to do so, to spend that money today. We would attempt to keep that going, hopefully not duct tape and that type thing, but we would not spend that money before it would be absolutely needed. We are estimating, though, that based upon our view of the building, that before 2028, we would have to spend two-point-four million dollars on that building.
Okay. Mayor, do you want to let them finish? I do have more questions, but I'm happy to let them finish. Okay. So were any other options explored for maintaining either a mobile or a temporary library in Depending on what the council's decision is, but have you looked at any other options for providing a library in downtown? There's, you know, I know other cities have done that, especially when they decide to relocate a library. They provided, it can be stationary, but a mobile library or a mobile library might actually, actually be a good thing in downtown, where the library can go to schools and different places around here. But have any of those options been explored? I mean, seems like it would be way less than two-and-a-half million dollars to provide some other option for library services as an interim service until whatever the decision is made. But I mean, at least what I'm looking at is leaving, redoing the library where it is is probably not going to be where we're at. So we're going to be doing, I'm guessing, either three or four. So we're going to need some sort of an interim solution, rather than just wasting two-and-a-half million dollars on a building that's going to be torn down. So I'm wondering if any, if there any alternatives have even been explored at this point.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Vice Mayor. Originally, under Community Services Director Jean Moreno, we looked at Centerline, the new housing that's on Glendale. We looked at some rentable spaces on the ground floor level that we felt were somewhat close to the Velmatig Library, and that was considered cost prohibited, prohibitive. There were no outlets. You had to bring in all of the I.T. lines. The amount of rent was far beyond what was the original estimate when we were looking at real costs. So to your point, we were looking at, can we go to schools? Can we have pop-up programs where we announce they're going to be in the park, they're going to be at the civic center, they're going to be, again, at a school? We were looking at trying to be out in the community to meet those needs as opposed to having like a retail kind of space.
Okay, so you have been looking at that, because I would think that that type of program actually would really kind of engage the community with the library and build some excitement, depending on where the library. I'm absolutely opposed to spending two-and-a-half million dollars on a building that's going to be torn down. I absolutely would not support that. I think that's absurd. And a mobile library would be something that could be used into the future, not just when the new library opens. So I would hope that we'd at least take a look at doing something like that, where we can bring the library to the community. And it would be a bridge to get us to where we need to go, depending on how we move forward, but I think that's really important. Part of the discussion, wasting two-and-a-half million dollars is just not in my DNA. So one other question, I don't see here a recommendation from the library advisory board on, I mean, we're at the second to the last page, we're the pictures and then questions. So where is the recommendation from the library advisory board on option one, zero, one, two, three, four?
Mayor, councilmembers, and Vice Mayor, that was the previous slide before the breakdown of all of the costs that were previously shared. It's on the screen currently. The library advisory board recommendation was a preliminary mockup requested for options number one and number four. Number one being to renovate in the existing building and number four being to relocate to the promenade.
Well, that's two recommendations. I mean, normally a recommendation is a recommendation. So were, they didn't, they weren't asked to dial this in to give us a recommendation?
Mayor and Council, this is what, there was much dialogue and consideration by the board, the library board, and these are the two that they would like to see. Essentially, they would like to see a mockup of both and then determine with the council what would be the best option.
Okay, so as of right now, we don't, because I've been in touch with my representative on the library advisory board, and the, there was a meeting in March, and then there was a meeting in, I guess April was vacated, and May they met, but there was no real discussion about this, because she just went back and listened, and I did too, to the audio. And there was no recommendation at the May meeting, and then the June meeting has been vacated. So based on what you're saying, Ms. Hall, is that they want more information before they're going to make a recommendation? Do I understand that correctly?
Mayor and Council, yes. They, again, they had dialogue in March. In May, we had not had an opportunity to bring it back before council, so there was no discussion about Velmatig. So the idea and thought was we bring back the two recommendations that they do have to view, so a study and just the preliminary mockups, that's their formal recommendation, and bring that to you all to see if that is feasible, if that's a direction that the council wants to go.
And then, and then where would the recommendation from the library advisory board come in? Are you looking for a consensus from us before they make a recommendation?
Mayor and Council, we are looking for consensus on these two options. They're similar, it's just option one and option four, they would like to see the actual mockup and more study done on those two options.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Guzman.
Yeah, it's on. It sounds to me like they don't have enough information and want more, and we don't have enough information and want more. So I'm thinking that maybe we need to postpone this and move this down to a different meeting. Obviously, we all have a lot of questions and we don't have all the answers here.
Is that all you had?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. As I recall, this is, at this point, this is my council item of special interest, so I'm going to explain it, how it occurs to me. And that is that we discussed it, we asked the library board to give us a recommendation on moving the library or not, based on basically the same information but months ago. And the library board said to move it to the promenade. It came back to the council, and the council, based on the input that we had received from the community at large, plus our own opinions of things, which are generally valid, we had, we had taken moving it to the promenade off the table. So then I ask, can we not put, we have to do something, because what we have here is a situation that's just disintegrating into nothingness here. This is, if, for any of you that don't recall the Glen Lakes Golf Course fiasco, this is that all over again. Just, we're the ones at the table now instead of the councils previous to us. We have an asset that's important to the community. We haven't been maintaining it, we haven't been keeping it relevant, and this is the challenge that we're faced with. So I had suggested that we put together an ad hoc committee, either the, I suggested the council to it, of citizens who are genuinely interested in all the possibilities for a library in downtown Glendale. You know, people that really are interested, really want to study it, really look at what other communities are doing, and come up with some suggestions. It was decided that it should go to the library board to see if they wanted to do that, not to ask them for another recommendation, but to ask if they wanted to do that. And the sense I got was is that they don't have an interest in doing an ad hoc committee, either simply of themselves, which would not be adequate in my view, but or even overseeing it. So it can come back to us. If the council wants to do that kind of an ad hoc committee of get input from citizens that truly care, that this is a high priority to, then we can do that. So my understanding, I'm not trying to upset the council's position of having taken the promenade off the table. I concur with that, and I'm not trying to change anybody's minds on that. But we have, we have, some of what we've heard today, I don't have in paper, but we've heard that priorities in the community for what they want in a downtown library include access to open space, and that being incorporated into the library was one of the things, which oddly enough, we have a library in the middle of a park now that doesn't include any real incorporation of that park green space to it. But, and then the, there were other things that were mentioned that were wanted that probably just are not possible within the building that exists now. And I think that what we ought to do is ask the community, and we ourselves look at, what's the possibilities? What are the possibilities? What could we gain by building a new library in Murphy Park, still named after Velmatig, but with a new floor plan and new design, and still be within the range of what it would cost to renovate the existing building that doesn't satisfy the needs or desires of the community anymore? Because what we have, what we've got going on here is what's called survivorship bias. We keep surveying the people that use the library. It's kind of like when planes came back in World War II, they went out and patched up all the places that had bullet holes in them. Well, that doesn't matter, because those are the planes that survived. You want to figure out where the planes that didn't survive got hit. If we keep going back and asking our residents who use the library, what do you like, what would you like to have more of, we're just going to go farther down that hole. We need to reach out beyond those that are using the library. I mean, it should have been a huge red flag when residents less than a half a mile from the library going north and going farther north don't make up a significant portion of the library users. Fifty-one percent come from neighborhoods that are as close or farther away. So it's a red flag if they aren't using it. We're not offering what it is they want in a downtown library, what their needs are. We should be looking at what is it they want? And then how do we accommodate that? Not looking at what do we have and what can we stick in there? I'll say that, you know, in the ten years I've been on this council, we haven't done anything visionary. Councils before us did things like strip annex out there to the white tanks that created the opportunity for us to have all this western area growth. Councils before us threw their hat over the ring and said, we're going to do an entertainment district. And they took great political risk in doing it, and a lot of them paid a political price for it. But now we brag about how great Glendale is based on the vision of councils before us, but we haven't done anything visionary. And this isn't the most visionary thing we could do, but at least it would be a look to the future and say, what do we want? What do our people want in downtown? What can we put and bring in in the, in the large umbrella of all that could be included in a library? What could we bring to downtown Glendale that will help do its part to keep Glendale, downtown Glendale, growing? Not just hanging in there, but actually growing and attracting people of all ages to downtown. You know, libraries aren't just for kids. And in fact, down here in the downtown, schools are closing because the school-aged child population is dropping, you know? We want to attract adults to downtown as well. We need to have library, offer in our libraries the kinds of things that they want. We need to go out and find out what that is. And I think we, I think that we need to look towards building a library that accommodates that and that matches the, the growth forward for our downtown, and that we're looking towards the future, but we're still respecting the past. You know, we're not taking it out of the library just because we can. We're not tossing the name aside just because very few people remember who Velmatig was and the difference that she made in so many young people's lives by showing them, you know, what a library could be. We hold on to those things. But, but I think Velmatig herself would want us to build the best possible library for downtown Glendale and for the people who live here now and for who we're trying to attract to it. And I think that's what we ought to be committing ourselves to. Thank you.
Great.
Well, I've waffled many times on this subject. And I, at this point in time, I believe I agree with Councilmember Guzman, that we need to put a hold on this for right now. I think we need some more involvement from the community, from the library board. I agree that we need some involvement. I'm not sure I a hundred percent agree with Councilmember Turner regarding an ad hoc committee. I don't want to see seven people of the community making the decision that really want to engage on this topic, because they're going to be people that really want it the way they want it. What we want is what the community as a whole wants, including my district. I mean, we are spending taxpayers' dollars either way. And whatever option we choose to go with, the entire city, all the citizens are paying for that. And so I think we need to engage the community. And right now, I believe, moving forward with this process. But again, I really thought, I found it insightful that the library commission has made a recommendation, it's just it's not final yet. It's a partial recommendation. And I think we need, we need to conclude that. We need to bring forth the material for them to study. And contrary to my comments to some people about not holding off on making this decision today, I think that may be the right decision to do at this point in time, is to move this forward to perhaps sometime later this fall after we get back from recess.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is obviously a difficult, uncomfortable conversation to have, and there's a lot of people that are not in this room that are listening and want to make sure that their voice is heard. I'm not going to change my mind about moving it to the promenade, because I don't want I'm not going to change my mind about moving it to the promenade because I don't want it there. I want it in the park. I'm going to say what I've been hearing about so many things that has to do with downtown. And there's just too many opinions just coming in at the same time, and it's one way or the other. And opinions are opinions, and they're based on emotion and heartfelt emotion, and I respect all the opinions. One of the things that I've been hearing, a lot of people have approached me and talking about it, is they, as they are very quickly to let me know, though their numbers may be a little off, they say, you can spend $150 million on the city hall, but you won't spend any money on the library. And I know their numbers are a little off, and I get the sentiment. You know, if it's for your offices, if it's for your employees, if it's for this, you know, and you can spend all the money you want, but when it's for the community, you don't spend any money. And I understand and respect the sentiment, though it may not be completely accurate. I understand it. From what I'm thinking, or what I'm gathering, and my personal feeling is, it'd be great if we could have a big, brand-new, beautiful building on one end of the park, possibly two stories, so that we would have the option and ability to have outdoor fixtures for patrons of the park to go outside, to enjoy the library outside, and then come in to get something where they need and back forth. And also, open up the park to reestablish to get as a park. That would help the rest of downtown. I've been hearing that a lot, from a lot, and not just the business owners, but a lot of people, open it back up as a park. Okay, well, I think the only way we can do that is if we make a brand-new building on one end or the other, possibly two stories, I don't know. I'm not an architect or an engineer. And I believe our best step forward would be that we invest into this, a new building to be a perfect complement to the city hall that we're going to be stepping into next year. I think that's a, kind of like a real good mix of all the feedback I've been getting from everyone, from a lot of my coworkers and friends, our teachers, a lot of my neighbors who go to the library often because that's their only source of, kind of like, the outside world. And personally, for me, I think that's the best thing to do. I'm also going to say that we also want to, I think safely say, we want to know all the, what it's going to cost, what it's going to look like, what's going to this, and what's going to that. I don't necessarily think that, that part of the ad hoc problem, I think, is that we're going to have people just volunteer to be in there. And I don't, I'm not sure that's a good idea because I would rather not have the superintendent and principals in that meeting or that committee. I would have, I would rather have teachers and librarians who are still in the classrooms because they would know what the kids need more than somebody who's been out of the classroom for many years. No disrespect to them being promoted, but cycles of how we teach kids nowadays changes very quickly and very often. So I think that having the teachers involved in that committee would be far more advantageous to us than to have, like, the top-tier people of school districts because they may be too far in the classroom to recognize what the kids need. Part of it is also going to be like, community groups that are heavily invested in the library, where they sentimentally, or they have meetings there, or whatever it is. I believe they should be involved too. I don't agree with having this, I don't know how many people are in the advisory board, but having just a few doesn't, in my opinion, that's not the voice of the entire city. It's not. I'm not sure if I answered any questions or I muddied up the muddy water even more, but I have to at least be the voice of saying, I would, it seems that more and more people are saying, if you're going to spend money on city hall, you better spend money on to the library to make it like a destination, still in the park, where people with pride can say, wow, that's our library. That's what I'd like to say.
Mr. Conches, you have anything?
I have a lot to say, Mayor, but I'm going to keep my comments short. Of course, I personally, my personal opinion is to keep the Velmatig Library in the park. And what I'm understanding is that the library advisory board is asking the council for approval on preliminary mock-ups on option one and on option four. And is that the consensus that the staff is seeking, Mayor?
They're telling us what they're asking for. That's something we have to make up and say.
Mayor?
We have options, one and four recommended, but we can go option 12.
Mayor?
Hold on, were you finished? All right, so in the audience, there's a gentleman that used to be a council member, Gary Sherwood. And Mr. Sherwood and I frequently disagreed on many things. I've seen a letter that he produced, and I agreed with him literally 100% on his letter. I don't have it in front of me. But to me, right now, I think the one thing everybody seems to be forgetting is, if we made a decision on option one or option four, the real thing we should be considering, how are we going to pay for it? And Mr. Phelps, I'd like you to talk a little bit about that, what we would have to do no matter what our option is, if we decide to build or renovate. Either way, it's millions of dollars. And can you kind of explain to everybody where we're at on that? So everybody has a better understanding of what our options truly are, not what we want them to be?
Mayor, members of the council. This is kind of somewhat off the top of the head, but I mean, typically, when we do a project of this scope, it should be part of your CIP. I mean, that's really kind of the framework we use to how we identify projects, how we scope projects, how we eventually fund projects. So you could do a couple of things, is that, you know, we could do a workshop this fall for CIP. CIP doesn't have to be aligned with the budget per se. We could have a special focus on looking at what the options are, talk about what the schedule would be. Because right now, we have a, I think it's 2028, I believe, is that correct, Michelle? For the, I think, in our CIP. So it's out a ways, I think it's beyond the five-year mark. So what we need to find is a project within, you know, to accelerate it up, then identify the funds and the resources for how the council would potentially pay for it. So normally, CIP is how we would do that. We typically do our CIP in the, you know, early winter or late winter, early spring as part of our budget process. But nothing is precluding us for saying, if there's desire of the council to come back, look at all, you know, look at the options you would like to identify. We can then start working on scoping and projected costs and timelines for, you know, for all those different options. And then eventually, council could say, here's the consensus. We want to put project 12 in the budget, which includes this, this, and this. Here's the schedule for when it will be. We'll put design dollars in to the next year's budget. We'll put programming and construction dollars in the second year coming from this source, and we'll finish the programming in year three. And I'm just, again, just giving you really off-the-cuff kind of a timeline. But that's normally, Mayor, how we would do that. It would be part of a CIP process, and we could be fully prepared to come back this fall and after the break and have a more detailed discussion. My guess is, and maybe Kimberly can talk about this, but when they said they wanted to see mock-ups, I'm assuming that one of the things we weren't able to do is really show them what a reconfigured existing building could look like. We didn't have the ability to show them what a build-out of a site on the promenade would look like. So I think they were, you know, being asked to weigh in on a decision without really a lot of detail of what it could look like. I think what I kind of got a sense was they were really indicating to us, we need more information so we can better understand the scope of the project and what, you know, what amenities would be in there, as was mentioned, you know, how much computer lab space, how much community space, et cetera. So my thought would be to, you know, if there's desire of the council, we would try to work on a special CIP workshop this fall and get it moving forward in our more traditional way of how we deal with a major project.
All right, then one question I have. If council came to a decision, said, we want to do this or do that, we have a CIP, where are we at as far as our bonding authority? What would be necessary there?
I think I'll defer to Assistant City Manager Rios.
Mayor, members of the council, one thing to clarify. The only thing that's in the current CIP right now is that first, option zero, that's what's in the current CIP, is about the $5 million to do the option zero. That's what's in your current CIP. In terms of funding, we would have to take a look at other types of funding sources, but we do not have capacity and authority under general obligation bonds for libraries now that we're pretty much exhausted that authority. We did talk with council about the potential of doing another bond election for library authority. And at this point, the earliest we could do that is the November of 2026.
All right, well, the reason I wanted to ask that is because if we make a decision, I think that we need to make that decision before we figure out if we want to do the bond. And if we do, we need to be able to tell the citizens what they would be voting on and what they're going to get out of it. So it seems like we're trying to hurry up over here, kind of like that squeeze ball. When you squeeze it, it pops out over here. We have to kind of do everything together, but do it in order. You got a question?
I did, Mayor, thank you. That was one of the things I was going to say, is we don't have the bond authority right now anyway. And clearly, the public wants the library in the park, I think. And honestly, I don't even think there's a consensus to consider moving the library to the promenade anymore. I mean, at least, Councilmember Baldenegro says he doesn't support that. Councilmember Turner, I don't believe, supports that. I don't support that. I don't know where, Councilmember Conches does not support that. So I think that if we're going to move this conversation forward, it doesn't appear there's a consensus at all for option number four. So I think, at least for where I'm looking at, the discussion lies between option number, I don't know what happened to option number two, option number one and option number three. What, where we're, I mean, and I, option zero wasn't recommended by the library advisory board, but maybe we take the conversation to the public is, and I know that there, one of the reasons that the idea of moving it to the promenade was to clear out the center of the park. So it's, you have, you know, nice open sightlines. It looks more like open space without a building in the middle. But clearly, the public wants the library in the park. I think we've, at least, we've all gotten that message. And then with the survey, your survey actually validates that, is that something that's important to people is, I need to put my glasses on, but outdoor spaces. That's another reason to leave the library in the park. So whether we rebuild the library where it is, I'm kind of leaning towards moving the library to the, I think it's the northeast corner of the park. But we don't have, it's not like we can, you know, pull a rabbit out of a hat and do that right now. But one of the things that I think we should seriously consider is that having a project like this presented to the public in a bond election is actually a good thing because you can point to it and say, this is what we're going to do with 17 million. We've got $5 million early allocated. If that's the direction everybody decides to go to start looking at the site and figuring out how it would fit and what we could do. But you need, instead of just saying, we're going to, you know, refurbish this and refurbish that, we're going to build a brand-new library for downtown. We're not going to cheap out on the Ocatillo residents and the Cactus residents that use this facility and say, we're going to save 10 million dollars by moving it over to the promenade when clearly the public wants the library in the park, and they deserve to have an asset that's going to serve the community into the future. So I understand, and I'm probably, I may be the most fiscally conservative person up here, but cheaping out on this, I don't think is the way to go. So I think that clearly, we've seen now that there's no consensus to move it ahead with any more conversations about moving the library to the promenade. And Mayor, you can double-check that, but, and I don't think anybody wants to spend $5 million on Band-Aids for the existing library. We can figure out, and I already made a note to bring back in a conversation on a mobile library to get us through this transition. But it seems that option one and option three are where we're headed, and that we need to bring the community in to see that whether it's really important to them that the buildings stay where it is, or whether they want to move the library to a completely brand-new. I think you can be a lot more creative and a lot more flexible with a brand-new space. For, it's about the same amount of money. I mean, the difference is $200,000 to have a brand-new, completely brand-new building that's, you know. But I think that's kind of where we're at. And I honestly think that in order to get residents on board with a library bond, telling them that we're going to build a brand-new library in downtown and give that asset to the residents that need it down here, and try to find ways to plug people into the library and get them excited about using the library is really important. If we're going to do this, let's do it right. Thank you, Mayor.
Well.
Mayor, thank you. I would agree with some of the things Councilmember Tomachov mentioned, especially, I think, including option three. If we're going to do a mock-up, they asked for options one and four. I think we should add three. And then get their recommendation and have a discussion later on about where we want to go with this project. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess maybe I'm the only one here. I don't think that we should give up on option four because we still got to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And if we find out that we don't have the money, that may be one of the only options we have. So I don't want to, I don't want to quit that idea, although it looks as though that's probably not going to be the most popular as of this minute. I do think, and I'd like to find out where the council is, I think that we do need to bring this back for a special workshop, probably September timeframe, to try to get a better idea, give the staff time to get their ducks in a row, answer more questions for all of us. Do we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, as long as we add, and I would agree, options two, three, and four. Leaving our option open for four, even though we may not have a consensus today, things may change. And I think we need to have that option available to us in the event that we don't have the money. And we, but we need to do something, and that could be still an option. So I'd agree with you on that point. So I would say to have it come back with the options two, three, and four.
Okay, and I am asking for a special workshop on just this. I think we need to have enough time to sit down and really go over it instead of being rushed through with a bunch of other things. Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Turner, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't see an option two. Right, so is it, it's one, three, and four?
Yeah, so it looks like a two, but it's really an option one, three, and four. Thank you.
Okay, well, and I could certainly support one and three, but it seems like we have a consensus that we don't want to spend more time going down the promenade road. We've been there, this is twice now, last meeting and this meeting. There's still no consensus for that. If we need to look at it later, fine, but I don't know why fiscally conservative council members would want to spend staff time and staff money on an option there's no consensus for. So I'd like us to do options one and three. And if it needs a special workshop, fine. But I would also say that, you know, we talk about bonding, and that is a very good and very traditional way of doing this. But we can also use cash, you know, and it doesn't have to be in the CIP. There was no, to the best of my recollection, there were no bonds and there was no CIP plan for purchasing 800 parking spaces. But somehow, we found the money to do that because that was a priority at that moment in time, at that one specific moment in time, not looking at the big picture of things. So there are ways to pay for the things that we want and that our residents want and deserve, so. But I do believe that the timing is important, as Councilmember Tomachov mentioned of, let's do this visioning, let's look at what's possible so that if we decide that we want to sell this concept to our residents, if they, not, you know, in the sense that let's make them aware that they could have this if they want it, then now's the time to be laying that groundwork so we're ready if and when we decide to put library bonds into a bond election in 2018, I guess, or whenever it is. Thank you.
Mr. Guzman.
I'm in agreement with you, Mayor. I think that we should not take away option four. It always comes down to the dollar, and it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. So we should, I believe we should leave option four to do one, three, and four.
Yeah, Mayor, I think Councilmember Baldenegro makes a valid point when we're spending $100 million on city hall and we're putting in gyms and things like that for city employees, and we can't come up with an extra $10 million to build a new library in downtown. I think that sends the wrong message to taxpayers. We have, I don't know what we have in our fund balance, but... We have, I don't know what we have in our fund balance, but we have way over and, and above what we're required to maintain in our fund balance. And I'm not a spendy person, but I, I'm going to go back to the point that I think our residents in, that use this asset, and that's probably one of the reasons people aren't using the asset is because it's an old, not well-maintained building. It's not offering, as Councilmember Turner said, it's not offering an inviting place for people to go. I don't want to go there. I'm going to be honest, I don't want to go there. It's not offering inviting place for people to go, and it's not offering the things they want in a library. So we should do better, and these residents deserve just as nice as an asset as every other resident that we've provided a library for in this city. So I am again going to say, I don't think we should cheap out. The promenade will be vacant, and if we end up having some kind of catastrophic thing where we can't spend the extra ten million dollars to do this, there's already five million dollars allocated towards this project, so you're really only talking about twelve or thirteen million dollars. Um, and I know we have, I don't know how far above our minimum um, uh, fund balance requirement are, is, but I know it's well, a lot more than thirteen million dollars. So we could try to bond for it. If for some reason the bonds fail, uh, we still could fund this project. And I think the residents that would be using this library deserve to have this asset. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I will, uh, agree to any, I'll give, I'll give my vote to consensus on any of the options you six deal with, as long as number three is in there, because I'm telling you right now, that's the only thing I'm going to vote for, no matter what we do.
Okay, so be clear, you are okay with option four?
All right. Yes, Mayor, I just want to give my consensus for option one and three, because there's no two, correct? Okay, one and three. And if, if the, if the council wants consensus for one, three, and four, then I would not give my consensus because I do not support, uh, the promenade. Thank you.
Okay, what I heard, uh, was we do have four people that's willing to have number four added. Keep in mind, this just gives us things to look at, gives more information for the citizens. That's all it is. And, and then if you, if you really want to get technical about Library Advisory Board, that's one of the things that they asked for, option four. All they're looking for is more information. I mean, we're not, we don't want to hide anything from anybody. So, uh, we do have consensus on that. I heard that. Uh, with that said, uh, is that all you need for this item?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so now let's go, let's go ahead and go into, I think it's item number one, correct?
Yes. Downtown Campus Reinvestment Project Update, Murphy Park Design.
Mayor, members of the council here provide now our discussion on item number one on our agenda, be led by Don Bessler, Director of Engineering, but he'll be joined from, uh, with our members from our project team, including John Kennedy, um, including, uh, Michael Jacobs from our design team, and also Nathaniel Kirby from Cole O'Shaughnessy Schiller.
Am I good to go, Mayor? Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I do want to call out one minor faux pas on our part. We have the PowerPoint that you have, the paper PowerPoint that you were given, the, and these, these slides aren't numbered, but this, the slide that shows the previous concepts that were presented at a community meeting, and on the backside of that same slide is the community input. We reversed the order of those, but we didn't change any of the content. So as we're going through this, it's somewhere in the middle, there's one page that's a little bit different, and we'll ask for your indulgence on that. I'm very excited to be here today to help present this with the panel that's up here today. But as you know, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that have been working on the downtown campus for several years. Michelle was just up here, Darren, Eddie, who you get to see every month. But there's a lot of people that put a lot of time in this. I think the previous item helps underscore the difficulty and the complexity is probably a better word of what we're going to be presenting to you today with the park. So um, go, I'm going to jump into that. Um, I'm accompanied again by Michael Jacobs, Nathaniel Kirby, John Kennedy. As we walk you through the park design and the inner relationship to the campus, because sometimes we hear people think of them as two different things, you, on a site like this, they're not two different things. They're part of the same thing. You can't have two things of this magnitude, meaning the City Hall building, the City Hall Council Chambers, the amphitheater, and the park work individually and not collaboratively. And so while some people have more interest in any of those four major elements of the campus, they all have to work together to make this thing work. If you recall, um, there were a number of public meetings. We started this process back in 2023. Michael's going to walk you through some of that. But if you recall, it was heavily, heavily attended. We held multiple sites. I believe it was at the, uh, the frac at the Heroes Park Library and here at the City Hall Council Chambers. On two different occasions, we ran public meetings and we livestreamed those, and we had people that were emailing in comments and suggestions for what should really happen with Murphy Park. But as you also recall, and as you were just reminded of a few minutes ago, we put a pause to going forward with the design of the park because we really wanted to attend to the issue of the Velmatig Library. And today's, you know, we're one step closer to attending to that issue. When you take a pause, like we did since 2023, some people that might be newer to the process believe that the process has just started, and the process hasn't started, just started. It's been an ongoing iterative process. And so we don't want to lose sight, and we don't want to, we want to make sure that the public that's viewing this and for the council's benefit, that we don't lose sight of all that came before because it's relevant, it's important, and we asked our citizens to come out and speak up, and they did. So with that, I believe I'm just going to turn it over to Michael, and we're going to just jump right into it, and then I'll help wrap up at the end.
Uh, thank you, Don. Um, Mayor, Council, uh, it's good to be back here. We've had the opportunity, our team on the design side has had the opportunity to work with you on this project since 2022, and it's been an incredible effort. So first of all, thank you for that. Um, Nate and I are going to tag-team this. I'm Michael Jacobs. I'm the architect on the project. Nate is one of the landscape architects. So the two of us will tag-team this presentation.
Do me a favor, pull your mic a little bit closer. Is that a little better?
Way better. Okay. Thanks for being, thanks for having us here, was what I was trying to say. Okay, jump into the agenda. There's really three things we want to do. As Don mentioned, there was a pause, so we want to talk about what we were initially doing with Murphy Park before the pause. We want to touch briefly on what's happening with the civic campus. You've had the opportunity to drive by and see that. And then we want to tell you what we have been doing currently with Murphy Park, including some of the community outreach. After that is a quick touch base on schedule and next steps. When we started on this project and every step we take on this project has started with the goals that the council and the community has put together. So we constantly come back to this, whether we're working on City Hall, Council Chambers, Amphitheater, or the park. So these are the key things that are driving the project as we're thinking about it. So Nate's going to jump through and talk about the beginning steps that we took on this project.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Michael. Mayor and council members, uh, as with any major project, uh, it's extremely important for the design team to develop and, uh, conduct a comprehensive site analysis and site assessment for the project, and even more so for a project like Murphy Park where there's so many historical elements within the project. Um, so we did exactly that. So we conducted a site analysis. This diagram on the screen right now shows the existing conditions, um, and some of those elements that are important to the community. Um, specifically of note, some of those elements are the two hundred-plus donor plaques that are embedded within the um, hardscape and paving, as well as some of the informational plaques throughout the plot, the park, and um, things like the clock tower at Murf, at Glendale Avenue and Fifty-Eighth Avenue. All of these are meant to be saved for reuse elsewhere.
Mayor?
Or saved for reuse.
Uh, Mayor, yeah. So it's already been decided that these plaques are going to be removed from the park permanently? You said, saved for reuse elsewhere. What do you mean by that?
I apologize by that. Saved for reuse within the park. Correct.
Well, we can come back to that. Thank you.
We also looked at the existing utilities on site to determine if there's any conflict with design elements such as paving or street trees. So looking at the sewer, water, storm, and gas utilities that are underground. We also looked at the existing paving on site. So predominantly, the, the paving on site is, uh, brick paving, and much of that is not ADA compliant due to heaving and uplift of that, those pavers. So a lot of it is creating trip hazards, and there's the banding around that, that paving is also, uh, chipping and spalling and creating kind of some awkward locations where the curbs on the paving turns a little bit. So the main thing here is to remove and replace due to the non-ADA compliance. We also looked at the existing site benches in review with city staff. It was determined that um, this wood bench, it's deteriorates rapidly in our harsh climate. Um, so it's become a maintenance issue and difficult to maintain for city staff. Many of these are located around the perimeter, but um, again, this was to be saved for reuse. As we looked at the existing light fixtures, there's several, uh, a variety of different poles throughout the park. Um, and on those same poles, there's a variety of different heads and fixtures on those poles. So many of them have a different style to them. Many of them are a different color. So some of them are warm temperature and some of them are cooler temperature. So the goal is really just to get a consistent finish throughout the park. And for example, here's the layout of where some of those historic light poles are located around the perimeter and within the park spaces. So there's quite a few out there um, in the park that we're dealing with. And then we worked with the, the city arborist, and as you can see in this diagram, we're portraying that a majority of the trees on site, as shown in green, are the ones that are to be protected in place. In discussions with the arborist, there were some trees that were deemed to be in poor condition, in decline, or have already died, and those are the ones that are shown in, in orange in this diagram. And so all these elements are contributing to the primary challenges that we're dealing with for the park, and this is a list of those challenges, and essentially, these are the items that we're tackling within our concepts.
Pardon me. Don mentioned the previous, um, input and meetings we had with the community. So back March of 2023, we had two different meetings, the, or two different sets of meetings. So there were multiple things happening on the fifteenth, multiple locations, and then again, on the twenty-ninth. So lots of good input from the community. That information was brought to council on April eleventh, so you guys were updated with that information at that time. Um, what we used to generate that, uh, conversation and that dialogue was community was three options, three ideas. This wasn't necessarily a design. This was showing them three different ways to look at the park so that we can engage in conversations with them and get feedback from them. And again, this is everything that you've seen back, um, in that April meeting. So highlighted here are some of the items that we heard from the community. The main focus and the main input was really about what they love and the need for the trees and shaded space, uh, places for gathering and a sense of belonging are really the things that were driving the design as we moved forward.
And to, this slide is providing some inspiration specifically, specifically to the streetscape. So one of the main goals for this was that we were incorporating a landscape buffer along the streetscape, um, providing a green edge to separate the vehicular areas from the pedestrian sidewalks, um, and just creating that green lush edge for the park. Um, with that landscape buffer, it also provides an opportunity to create a tree-lined street to have more of a, a strong edge with a shaded tree edge, which emphasizes the, the green park space from the perimeter, periphery of the, the downtown campus. Um, also along the streetscape, you have areas for smaller gatherings that also allow for bike parking. Um, but one of the other things is the historic light poles along the perimeter to tie in with the historic downtown district. And then this imagery on this slide is portraying the, uh, concept of a flexible and active spaces that complement the amphitheater. So what we were looking at here was how do we create comfortable and shady and flexible spaces? We're looking at, um, how the smaller sections of grass enhance the, the pathways that are being proposed, as well as how do we create gathering spaces for the community while still feeling of, of Glendale and of Arizona, with some opportunities for pop-up retail or other programming. And with that, here's some examples of what that programming could be. Um, a lot of the open green spaces allow for flexibility for a variety of different programming, whether it's games, yoga in the lawn, festivals, or other, um, community events in the park.
So this image here, everything that's in color is things that are under construction. And if you've been by the site recently, I think one of the latest things that have happened is the bridge that connects council and City Hall is up. So you can see that beginning of that link that's going to happen. I think the next major thing that you would see in the near future would be the, the shade canopy that's going to come up over the amphitheater stage. So everything in green is under construction, and then basically the photo, aerial photo on the right with Murphy Park and Velmatig Library, that's the canvas we're working with at this point. And we've developed three options, and Nate's going to walk you through those three. So it's a base, baseline plus, and baseline plus plus. The first one is really working to honor the budget, the project costs that we were, um, dealing with to make sure we could respect that.
So this concept A, as Michael's mentioned, is our baseline, uh, respecting the existing approved project cost. One of the main things here is that we wanted to, the main takeaway is that it's taken, removing the existing paving and bringing in new paving, essentially similar to the layout that it exists today. So it's removing the brick paving and replacing it with new ADA compliant, um, paving throughout the park, um, but while also maintaining that loop that's a historical, historic loop around the library. Um, we're also maintaining the lawn and retention areas that allow for programmable spaces, and then also implementing those, those donor plaques, this saving of those donor plaques, um, but also increasing the shade with new trees and landscape. So as I mentioned, for this one, it's developing, the circulation is, is based on the layout of the existing park today, um, maintaining that loophole around the library. Um, there's not too much difference with the overall circulation, other than, um, its new hardscape for this circulation scheme. For the programmable spaces, um, with this scheme, it maintains, like I mentioned, it men, it maintains the lawn areas that allow for picnics in the park or other programming events for the community. Um, but it also creates that outdoor plaza on the west side of the library, also creates a connection to the new amphitheater to the west. So in concept A, the lighting strategy, uh, we're respacing the lightings, the historic light poles along the streetscape to have an even distribution, and then everything within the park is the historic light poles, but they're repaired in place as needed. Moving on to concept B, this is our baseline plus. So essentially, everything in this concept is what includes everything from concept A, but it's plus, or in addition to, hence the plus here. Um, so the main difference here is that we're able to have a, a new hardscape layout throughout the campus. And this hardscape, that loop, which it has a similar loop that loops around the library, but it also ties into the council chambers, amphitheater, and City Hall on the west side, so creating that one united campus. Um, it also has, with this, we're also able to have additional grading throughout the campus, which allows us to raise the, the turf areas and bring every, everything more flush with the paving areas, so everything's more flexible and programmable in those lawn areas. So as you can see here, the main, the main drive here is the, the loop, that major, um, loop main circulation which connects to the link that Michael was talking about, which is under construction now, and just feels like a cohesive, continuous, united campus throughout. And here, one of the nice things is that we have a lawn, that overflow lawn on the west side of the library, which acts as kind of an overflow and an extension for the, the larger amphitheater to the west. So it feels like a, again, a cohesive, unified campus. And as I mentioned before, the, the lawn is flush with the hardscape elements, so it's easier to maintain for larger events. The lighting strategy on this was to maintain the historic light poles around the perimeter along the streetscape, but this scheme does incorporate the new RNA poles, um, which are shown in blue within the park. So we're able to locate those where we want them and where we need them to, to maximize, uh, programming and light for those spaces. These also, sorry about that. These also tie in with the lighting that's, uh, at the amphitheater and is going in soon. As for the trees in this, we have a couple more trees that would need to be demolished based, or removed based on the, um, the hardscape layout. We would want to, uh, keep as many as places, in place as possible. There might be some flexibility to move the hardscape here and there, but these additional trees trees shown in orange are the ones that are in conflict with the hardscape path. But with that said, there's additional fee, there's additional budget for additional trees to make sure that we have more trees on site than are there today in each of these schemes. And then concept C is our baseline plus plus, which incorporates everything from concepts A and B. And the main thing here is the addition of the gazebo and that smaller event plaza. Currently, it's shown on that south side of the, the plan, in this plan. That location is not final and is open to discussion, but it's to show that that location is to show, to show that the gazebo is the addition to this scheme. So, as you can see in the circulation diagram, it just creates that slightly larger event plaza on that south end adjacent to the gazebo, maintains the similar circulation throughout the park as, as concept B, other than that gazebo space. Again, the programming remains the same. It's just the addition of the gazebo for the program areas. And then same for the lighting strategy. The main thing here is that that gazebo could be, have specialty lighting and well-lit to create more of an iconic draw for the park. And then we also have in this one, a couple more trees that are in conflict with that specific location. Those trees would be, need to be removed, but again, there's additional ones that would be added to make sure that we have additional, more than what are out there today. So, here's some additional detail imagery of the paving. So, this is a high-quality acid etch finish. So, this is, would be ADA compliant and slip resistant. This is what we're proposing for Murphy Park as it's already what's being implemented at the amphitheater and city hall. So, again, emphasizing that concept of united campus. So, it's the same paving throughout. The bench and litter receptacles, so we're proposing a finish that is more durable than wood to mitigate those concerns of the maintenance issues with the wood benches, but also this is something that's contemporary, but also traditional with a modern flair. So, we liked how this was playing and tying in with the amphitheater scope as well.
Yeah, I'm going to hold you up there for a second. On the benches, I, I totally get it as far as metal benches over wood benches. They've been Boy Scout projects, Eagle Scout projects. A lot of different people have tried to paint them. I don't have a problem with the metal ones, but I know there's skateboarders out there in any place that bench is near cement. They're going to be throwing their skateboards. The one on the right lower of that page has got that divider in it, which stops the skateboards. Whatever you do, I hope that that's considered that any bench has that to keep skateboarders from, I don't know what they call it. There's a term that they use, but I don't know, what is it? Are you a skateboarder?
Grinding.
Grinding? I don't know. But anyway, I think you know what I'm talking about.
Thrashing.
What is it?
Kind of.
Right, okay. All right.
Mayor, council members, thank you. There's also, you can also board slide, but yes. Yeah, so that option, it can have the arm or that separator. And so, that's an option for any of these schemes for the benches, to clarify. And this is an example of the RNA light pole that we had, are installing at the amphitheater and are proposing for Murphy Park as well. What we like about this is that it's a single pole, but you can have multiple heads on it. So, you can direct that light where you want and need it and maximize that output with one pole. So, you have fewer poles within the park. And that was one of the takeaways from the assessment, that there's a lot of poles and it, this will help reduce the clutter. So, and also, these poles do well in both a modern and historic setting. So, it'll kind of fade away and let the park and the green do the, do the talking. And then finally, looking at the landscape viable with the park, one of the main takeaways that we wanted to provide is using massing of accents and other shrubs to bring this park and celebrate the sense of an oasis in Glendale. So, the imagery up here is a few different projects that we've worked on in the valley, but all of them create, especially if you're looking at the landscape, a lush feel that feels a little bit more like an oasis, which we want to celebrate at Murphy Park. One of the other elements that we want to make clear is that we're proposing single-trunk trees that open up the views into the park to make it feel open and safe and really just celebrating the green within the park. And as an update on the recent community meetings, on June 9th, the team hosted a public input meeting to evaluate the design, the design concepts that we've discussed today. And a couple of the main takeaways were similar to what we've discussed. So, wanted to make sure there's a clear direction and thoughtful plan for the donor plaques. There was some comments on the gazebo and then what is the future of the library, as was discussed previously. And then the majority seemed to favor options B plus or B plus plus. And I think, John, you had a couple of comments on, and then following this, there was a Parks and Recreation Advisory Meeting. I think John had a couple of comments on that.
Yes, so the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission heard this presentation after the public meeting on June 9th. And they, a lot of good discussion, a lot of, a lot of good comments and interest that were similar to what was held in the, that was heard in the community input meeting. But the commission made their recommendation on option B, baseline plus. And they wanted to make it clear, they have a strong interest in there being more green landscaping, emphasis on green landscaping as opposed to desert landscaping or zero scape. They wanted to see more green, as well as interested in getting more robust plans of what to do with the donor plaques and the existing benches. But that, so that was the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation.
So, this second to last, or third to last slide here is just showing you the three options, highlights the details below, really with base, baseline, we were trying to respect the existing budget, which means we need to work with existing grade, kind of have the new, the loop be a new loop in the existing place. Option, next option, baseline plus allows us to create that loop that knits the two sides together. So, it really starts to become one campus. And then baseline plus plus was looking at adding the gazebo in the lower right corner.
Just a couple more slides and then we'll be done. So, this is the schedule that we've laid out for the project. It's pretty straightforward. And what this intends to do is to coincide with the opening and the reconvening of the city hall and city council chambers and amphitheater. And then next steps, we would, what we're hoping for today is a consensus on one of the three concepts that we presented to you, so that the design team can then go back in and start working that design. This would come back to you in the form of a voting meeting at some point to negotiate the guaranteed maximum price for whatever the park project would finally cost, get within the parameters of the three concepts we've shown you. I guess I would conclude also by saying that in general, as you think about all of this, all of the concepts that the team has come up with provide for more trees than exist today. All of those trees are going to be put towards shade species where people really can enjoy the comfort of having that in a park-like setting that was really, heads and tails an important thing that came out of the public involvement. And that our landscape architect team would hand-select these at the nursery. So, hand-selected nursery stock. That will make sure that they're viable. That will make sure we get the best that's available that's out there. And we really give these trees a running start as teenagers instead of infants that we're putting in the park, which sometimes happen with capital projects. So, a lot of thought about the plant material, the trees and their viability has been given within these concepts. The consolidation of turf grass, you've seen that over and over with the different concepts to really help create some rooms within the park that can be programmed, used for gathering spots, and really help make the park much more inviteable and enjoyable. And we'll say it again to make sure it doesn't get misinterpreted. Any of the historical artifacts, all of the historical artifacts that are in this park will be carefully removed, preserved, and then will be put back into the park in the appropriate way and manner in which the council sees fit, whether that involves some additional public process or not, to be determined. But that we understand the sanctity of those elements and they're not going to just be carted off somewhere and nobody kind of, we sort of forget what happened to them. So, with that, I think we are done with our presentation.
Yeah, could, could you tell me the, the major difference between concept B and concept C besides the gazebo?
Mayor, council members, that is the major difference, is the gazebo itself.
So, everything that's in concept B would be in concept C, including the gazebo?
Yes, adding in.
That, that's the one that I personally would support myself. I, I think it gives people one more opportunity to do something in the park, whether it's a wedding, whether it's a speech, whether it's a political rally, whatever. It, it sort of, I, I think brings downtown really together, but that's just my opinion. Mr. Melner?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions on concept baseline plus plus. You have trees along the south edge where there is parking currently. Are you proposing to remove that parking or is that parking still there? It kind of looks like there's cars underneath those trees in the picture.
Mayor, council members, in that scheme, baseline plus plus, the parking is, is still maintained. None of these concepts are proposing to remove that parking at this time. So, that scheme, that planting layer is north of the existing.
Okay, thank you. I would like to see if there's consensus on council to perhaps remove that parking and just add that, as open space. It's, it's a, it's a poor parking scheme, pulling in and backing out into, onto Glendale Avenue is very difficult. So, I, I agree with that concept of doing that. So, I'd like to see if, if that'd be some, I know it's going to cost additional, there's going to be some additional costs there, but I, I think with what we're doing, we should do it right. And if, if that helps the park, I think that would be beneficial. And you mentioned that the structures, the antique structures would be kept and restored. I heard about the benches, but we haven't specifically said, so the clock, I believe in our discussions, was going to be restored or put back into the park for sure. What about the existing lighting? Do we have a place for those to go? Because I, you, you're putting different lighting in the park, which I don't oppose, but what are we using the existing antique lighting that we have in the park for?
Mayor, council member, the idea would be that we would salvage as much of that existing light infrastructure that can be, reuse it for parts if necessary. If it ends up getting put somewhere else, that certainly could happen as well, but it wouldn't be to destroy it and dispose of it unless there's something physically, you know, structurally wrong with the pole itself. It would be to do that. So, that would be the first thing. I wouldn't mind a little more clarification, if possible, on the parking. There's diagonal parking, head-in diagonal parking there. Your suggestion about removing it, do you mean no parallel parking either or what?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are you done?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you help me understand, it's on, can you help me understand why the, it's less expensive to just refurbish the existing poles and the lights in the park? That's on option A, right? That includes basically leaving the existing lighting in there and repair and make, make sure everything that's, is in working order?
Yes, council mayors, mayor, council members, one of the main differences between base and baseline plus, in base, the poles stay where they are. If the bulbs aren't working, we're going to replace the bulb. If there's some wire that's faulty, we'll replace that, but generally, they're staying as is. And then in baseline plus, we redo all the electrical underground, all new poles and all new, the ability to add power where we want the power. It's a whole new system with baseline plus.
Okay, would it be possible to do that by, and, and just replay? I know the, I mean, the, the look, the historical look of the park with those existing antique-looking poles, I know they're not all matching, but I think that's kind of part of the charm is, at least in my opinion, is I just don't see any reason to, to remove under the, under B plus or, yeah, to remove all of the lights and put them, get rid of them or do whatever with them. Is it possible just to update, make sure they're all in working order, update all the electrical underground? It's my understanding that there's a lot of problems with the electrical underground there anyway that needs to be addressed, but that if we did that, we couldn't just have all those lights. And if we need to add some additional lighting that is, kind of matches the antique look of the park, is that possible? I know a lot of people that have contacted me, they like the way that those lights in the park look. It's kind of the charm in the history of Glendale.
Mayor, council, or vice mayor, excuse me. So, is it theoretically possible? Yes. The result would not be the same in a couple of important ways. One, you would not then be having light fixtures that align and integrate and match with the rest of the campus. So, that may only be an aesthetic issue for some people. It's an operational issue, but that's one of the outcomes of that. The other thing is these lights basically just throw a downlight. They don't, you can't really direct them, our existing, I'll call them acorn fixtures. So, you're going to end up with a lot more lights and a lot more electrical when you redo the electrical. I don't know what the exact number was, but you can see in the analysis that you've removed a bunch of light poles because you're able to now aim light and pool it and spot it where you want it, as opposed to just keep filling it with light poles so that eventually you get the coverage that you're after. So, that, that's two of the big things that would be different if you did that.
Okay, is it possible to, to accomplish that by installing light poles that are a little bit more looking like they're from the past with, you know, maybe so that it at least forces, more like a street light where you have the, I don't know what you want to call it, I'm not, but the, the thing on top that makes the light shine down? That they don't look, I mean, these are just, at least to me, they're very modern looking. And so, it really changes the look of the park. And that, and, and I've had people that were at the meeting and have, you know, people are paying close attention to this, commented on the fact that they don't really like the modern-looking lights, the changeover from what's in there now to the modern. I understand now why we need to replace them, but is there something, I mean, I know you can get something that's kind of retro-looking. Is it possible to, to move, move in that direction?
So, Mayor, Vice Mayor, if the council is uncomfortable with the light fixture, then we could go back and look and see if there's something that's less modern-looking, to use your words. So, that's a matter of research and looking and then if this is something that needs to come back to the council or not. I would just say, in the public meetings we held, that wasn't a deal-breaker for people. So, I understand that everybody has preferences. This is where the design team is trying to take the campus as a whole and the integrated campus. So, you know, we, whatever consensus you come up with, we will work within that consensus.
Okay. I mean, I'm not the only one who has an opinion. I do have a couple other questions. You spoke about the trees and they're going to be handpicked. Will they, because we've got a kind of a history of trees, trees not surviving around the city. I've used district funds to plant trees multiple times that just didn't make it. Are they going to, and these are going to hopefully be, you know, mature trees that are going to be expensive. So, are they going to come with a warranty?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, all the trees that we purchase will come with a warranty. But I will also, two, two important things. The design team is going to ensure that we have really good irrigation, because irrigation's coming back into play, which will include, include deep root watering for trees. So, that's an important feature. The gentleman to my right is going to give tender, loving care and make sure that his staff pays close attentions during the establishment period so that they really have a head start and, and are really doing well. So, we're pretty confident we can get good stock. I, I wouldn't call them mature because, you know, a tree, if it's taken care of properly is 80 years old, but the point made is they're not going to be seedlings that we're trying to limp along from, from birth.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Kennedy has done a, a really, there's been a big, a marked improvement in, in how landscape is being maintained and looked at. So, thank you for that, Mr. Kennedy. And then also, you know, ideal planting time. I mean, you know, I mean, I know that's a mistake that in the past, I spent, I don't know, quite a bit of my district funds on trees for a park and they planted them all in July. So, I mean, there's also, there's a lot that goes into it. So, I trust that, that those are all going to be considerations, that if some of them do fail, that we can use the warranty to have them replaced. Mayor, if I could, I've got a couple more things. The benches, I'm not sure I understand, some of those benches were part of art projects, of city art projects. So, were those going to be the one, you know, I mean, they don't, they're not, they don't match, but they are special. So, what's the plan for the, for the benches that are, you know, some of them are kind of wildly painted and not necessarily maybe my taste, but they are, they are city art.
So, Mayor, Vice Mayor, again, the benches will be not destroyed, they'll be taken out. It wasn't our understanding, or at least let me speak for myself, it wasn't my understanding that any of those were an actual public art project. They were an Eagle Scout or Boy Scout project for sure. So, we will respect that, we will move them. And if they can be repurposed, we absolutely will be able to do that. I think, again, that's a to-be-determined sort of a decision, but we're not going to preclude that. preclude that decision by demolishing them.
So, um, Mayor, if I could, so they're going to be removed from the park and, and repurposed elsewhere or is that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, they would be removed from the park and be available to be repurposed. We have, we don't have a plan to put them someplace specifically. But again, coming back to the design where you're trying to integrate something so it really looks like you're doing it holistically in an integrated way, in a comprehensive way, having a mishmash, if you will, or a mashup, I think that's the new term we use, um, of different park furniture didn't make sense from a campus standpoint.
Okay. I mean, they, they could probably be repurposed, maybe scattered around downtown for places for people to sit. Um, but I mean, they are, they are special to some people. Um, and then the last thing, um, and I'm sure you're not going to be surprised, is the, um, the plaques in the sidewalk. Um, those are, and I don't know, not, not everybody up here is aware probably, but I did tell, share with you when you presented this to me, that one of those plaques is for my sister-in-law, who was not my sister-in-law at the time, that committed suicide back in the 1980s. And that plaque was a gift from another family in her memory. That is not the only memorial plaque out there. That means a lot. And a lot of families have contacted me, a lot of people in my family and other families that have plaques out there. That was a self-funded campaign for people who wanted to, most of them are memorial plaques in memory of someone. I'd say the majority of them are. Um, especially for families where the loved one was cremated. That's essentially a resting place for that person where the family can go and pay their respects to the person because that's, if they've scattered the ashes in the ocean or wherever they've done that, that's the place where they go. Um, and that's, those are kind of sacred things to this community that mean a lot, not just to my family, but to a lot of families. And I think it's really important that, um, and I have talked to a really big contractor, a concrete contractor in the valley, and I know it's not that complicated to remove those plaques, map, map all where they all are and put them back where they are so that when people come, they know where it is. Because if they're moved somewhere else, people are not going to know where it is. They're going to have to wander around all over downtown and try to figure out how to find Aunt Mary's plaque because they don't know where it went. So, um, I think it's a very sensitive subject for a lot of people. Those are very meaningful things to a lot of people, and I hope that they would be treated with the dignity and respect that they deserve and that they're replaced in the places where they are. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Turner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, to tag on to that, as long as that's the topic on the floor, I, I concur regarding the, the plaques that, and I can understand that the sidewalks aren't necessarily going to be in exactly the same places. So if the, if the plaques get placed back into the same general area of the sidewalk, um, where, where they came from so that, that people would know where to find them. And there's value to those plaques, especially if you don't know who the people are, because it should give you some context of how you fit into things, you know? There's a lot of people that did a lot of work in Glendale over the years and had enough pride in it that when there was an opportunity for them to buy a bronze plaque to memorialize their marriage, like my parents did, or a family member, or a business, that they put the money up to do it. And, uh, you know, the, the fact that you maybe don't know who they are should tell you something about, you know, how long your memory's going to last if you haven't been nearly as productive as these people were. Um, so encourage people to get out and do more in their community and, uh, so they'll be remembered longer as well. But, um, those bronze plaques are very important to people. And if, if you want to send a clear message that you really don't care, that would be the place to do it, you know? Mess that part of the project up and that will certainly tell people that have been here for years that you don't care. Um, regarding the lighting in the park, uh, the turn of the century streetscape that we have downtown was the product of, um, public dialogue and public input over the years. Um, I and others think that the historic appearing lights should remain as much as possible. That's not to say that there can't be lights added that would provide that additional spotlight effect on new features and things like that. But, uh, um, I don't know, I, my dad's birthday was a few weeks ago and, and we used to always sit and, uh, watch the Music Man. And if you know the Music Man, you get a feel for what I think our park ought to be like. Um, but the, uh, so the historic lights, let's use them as much as possible. They're part of the citizen adopted streetscape for downtown. It's, it's, it's about the brick sidewalks, it's about the canopies over the storefronts, it's about restoring the, the brick faces to the storefronts. It's all part of that that makes our downtown as attractive as it is. Um, I'm also in favor of keeping as many of the wood benches as possible, particularly in the east half, the, in essence, Park Library half of it. If we need to integrate some metal benches into the other side, go ahead, but, uh, the wood benches will stay, you can sit on those later in the day than you can a metal bench that's been sitting out in the sun. Uh, the only real problem with the wood benches is we don't maintain them well. And that's a community project, or could be a community project. Um, but it's, and, you know, yeah, things have to be maintained no matter what they are and, and those benches can be maintained better. And, and I'm willing to go out there myself and sand down a bench and put a fresh coat of tung oil or linseed on it, whatever the case may be. Um, uh, I concur with Councilmember Malnar and others about eliminating the street parking on Glendale Avenue there. Um, there's not that many spaces and I know it's going to upset some merchants, but, um, if those spaces weren't there, we wouldn't be advocating to put them in. I don't think anybody would say, well, let's eat up some of that park space and put a parking in there. No. You know, so if we're designing this in essence with an open mind, let's realize that those detract from the park. They're a visual barrier for people in traffic, looking over to the park and seeing the greenery. Instead, they're seeing the reflection from the glass and the chrome and the whatever else. So let's eliminate that. We have hundreds and hundreds of unused parking spaces downtown and, uh, eliminating this handful of them is not going to drastically impact anybody's business. And, uh, and they don't own them anyway. These are publicly owned parking spaces. We're not getting rid of anybody's private parking. Um, the, the gazebo is, really is a quaint idea. It's a cute quaint idea and it lends to that in essence, turn of the century part. Um, it, put it on Glendale Avenue and certainly people will see it and it'll be more of a trademark for us and all of that. And I think, you know, to that respect, it's good. I can't imagine trying to conduct a wedding on the Glendale Avenue side with traffic and, you know, and then you'd have people who intentionally obnoxiously knock, you know, honk their horn and all. But, uh, it, it's a nice feature. It's a, you know, homespun type thing. I just don't know if, if the south side of the park is the place for it or whether it'd be better on the north side where it would, um, maybe not be as notable, but might be easier to use and, and all of that. So, um, but certainly if we're going to have the gazebo, we, we don't need that street parking there competing for it as well. So, um, those are my notes at this point in time. Thank you.
I forgot to say something.
Let me, let me let her go first.
Yeah, okay. Um, I also agree with removing those parking spaces on Glendale. I don't know how many times I've tried to pull out of there and almost get hit. Um, it, it's a hazard. But if we did remove those, would you bring that area of the park, you know, back some or would we just leave it there as sidewalk? That's the question. Also the gazebo, um, I think that's a great idea too, but I don't think that putting it where it's at right now is a good idea also, I agree with. Councilmember Turner, you're going to get people, I, I wouldn't want to hold a wedding where the traffic's going to come by and you have people honking and all that. I think it'd be better on the other side. Uh, as far as the plaques go that Council, uh, Vice Mayor Tomachoff was talking about, um, is there, would there be any reason why they couldn't be put back in the same spot? Like she had said, you know, map it out so that they could go back in that area? Uh, I, I, I agree that that is a sacred, uh, for some people, that's very important. Um, I would be in agreement with that, on, on that. Now, as far as the lighting, um, I know at Heroes Park, they put new lighting in by where the dog parks are, which are right across the street from, right in front of my house. And I was actually worried that the lights there were, it was going to affect us, but it hasn't. I know that it's not the same types of lights, but I know that there are a lot of new kind of lighting and, um, so I'm not exactly sure. In, in some of the pictures that you showed, it, it just looked like there were so many lights. Uh, I think it was in the very first one, baseline. It just seemed overwhelmed with light poles if you keep the same ones and you just add up, you're just adding more. It just looks crowded. So, um, but that's just my opinion. That's all, Mayor.
All right, uh, Lauren?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I caught a couple of things. I forgot to mention that I agree with, um, removing the parking on Glendale Avenue. Um, that it is a very dangerous place, not necessarily to park, but to try to get out of. Um, it's really, it's really not, not a good idea. Um, and I also agree that that is a really noisy place to put a gazebo. I mean, that the traffic on Glendale Avenue generates quite a bit. It's a very busy street. Um, also, you know, it's not, you're not really getting any kind of buffer between the street and the, where the train crosses. I just don't think that's ideal place. But I, I guess, um, I'm, I'm okay with the gazebo, but I think that if, if that's what the concept that there's a consensus for, that we should hold off on figuring out where that's going to go until we know where the, what's going to happen with the library. Because I think it all needs to work together. So if the lib, I mean, if you can't put it in the north part of the park, if that's where the library is going to end up being, so, or it needs to be located someplace where we're certain that it's not going to interfere with if the library is going to be relocated in the park, that it's going to be in the way. So I think that's something that we need to consider, but I do think that on the south side of the park near Glendale Avenue where you have not much of a buffer, um, for sound and, and passersby of having some sort of an event there, um, I don't think that's an ideal location. Um, like I said, I'm okay with that concept if that's what everybody wants to go with, but I think we need to have further discussion around where the gazebo would go. Um, and then the last thing I forgot to ask was, um, the new library entrance walk is part of the, uh, concept B and B deluxe or plus or whatever it is. Um, that would have to be also put on hold until the, wherever the library is going to, the permanent spot for the library is going to be also. So that would be either paused or unplugged or whatever from the project, at least for the time being, wouldn't it?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I, I think on that issue, I mean, you point out, you make a good point about the library issue, the entrance way, excuse me. I, the, the staff's going to need, or the team's going to need to reconvene after and just sort of think through how this emerges and that would be an obvious thing. There may be other elements to this too. We, we need to look at that. And so we would take that comment broadly.
I could just ask, adding a gazebo at a future date, once the library issue's decided, would, would that, that, that's, is that a viable way to manage where the gazebo is going to go?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, possibly. It, it's going to need some attendant utilities. So we have to think that through a little bit. Um, so possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of thoughts on the, on the lighting. I'd like to address that. So again, as a reminder, um, the existing lighting fixtures have all kinds of issues and that we have part issues and they really weren't designed to meet kind of the current ADA regulations for how we make pathways, uh, safe. So what the project team did is they said we should have the same historic looking light fixture around the entire perimeter of the campus. And the reason why is obviously that kind of give, it ties in with our historic downtown, but those lights are also augmented by street lights that are overhead that actually do provide the, the ample amount of light on the, on the pathway. Internal to the site, we have to also light to, you know, to standards to make it safe. And so it was there that we decided on the inside to use directive light that we could make sure we can light specific pathways, make it easy to do. And so I just want to make sure that there's a, they would still have the historic look on the entire perimeter. We would go to this, on the plus and the plus plus, we would use the, an historic fixture all around the entire campus and we would only be using the, the other lights for the internal part where we have more trees and where they're pulled away from street lighting and kind of other lighting to make those pathways safe. So that, that's what has been envisioned within the, within the plan is to, um, is really do a combination of both of those. And we felt that met the needs of, of kind of the safety issue as well as maintaining the historic look of it.
All right, Mr. Baldwin, I grow.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in, in all three of these concepts, I noticed the one thing that's the same is the sidewalk from 58th Avenue to the front of the library where it sits currently. That is the one thing that's constant in all three. My suggestion is if we get all 200 donor plaques, because they would not be able to be mapped out in the same location as Vice Mayor had asked to do. But if we could put them on the outer edge of the walk, that's, that path from 58th Avenue to the front of the library, so that they would all be located in one location. So even if they were moved, people aren't, families aren't upset because they're not finding it, they would just know they're going to be in that one pathway so they could find them there. I believe we should, when we reinstall them, make a map that we do have available. I agree. I think if we keep it in one location as opposed, because in all, in concept B and concept C, that entire, let's just call it racetrack changes. So the map would then change and it might upset people that, okay, I can't find it, I can't find it and I don't want to upset anybody. But if we changed them all and say they're all now located in the one pathway, that's, I think, one, um, idea to try to keep everybody from, from being upset that they can't find or they, they read the map wrong or incorrectly, or we, or we printed it wrong because sometimes we have a, we make mistakes, simple human mistakes as well. I like the idea of, um, concept B where we are, I believe, uh, replacing all underwire, underground wiring and, and upgrading it, I believe was, was what I thought I heard. Um, I know we had a situation at Horizon School, which is relatively same general, um, age of, of the park where in the middle of the day, the entire school went out of power and they ended up having to find, uh, the problem was underground in the middle of the field and it was a huge, huge problem. Um, if we go with concept A, not replacing any underground wire, go to, and then just replacing lights, I think our problem is, is going to be coming up soon, possibly. I'd rather just replace all the wire so that we have, we don't have to worry about it for the next 60 years. Just that way it's just piece of line on that. Um, as far as parking on the south side of the park, um, I'm not sure if I like eliminating it. I, I would be, I mean, I would like to keep it. I know it's not perfect. I, I understand that. Um, I would like to, at the very least, make it parallel parking, similar to the north side of the park, so we don't eliminate all that parking. Though we say we have hundreds of parking spaces around the city, um, around downtown. Um, we all look for the closest parking spot. We don't say, I'm going to go park a couple of blocks away and just have a nice leisurely walk, we, and, and not in the summer. So I think we have to be mindful of eliminating those completely, just to be on the safe side. And, um, as far as gazebo goes, and just to be a little lighthearted, um, when I get married many, many years from now, and I get married in downtown Glend, I'm just going to get a permit to shut down Glendale so there's no loud cars. And then we should be fine. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
If, if, um, there was a consensus to remove the parking spaces there on that south part, uh, we could make a memorial there for all the plaques for that space. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, hold on, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor. Um, thank you, uh, for all of these concepts. I, I do support, uh, concept B. Um, and, uh, there's a lot of things that I appreciate about it. More trees, more green space, and also the resurfacing to make sure that it's all on the same plane. Um, I'm, I don't care for a gazebo. If the council wants a gazebo, that's fine, but it's not a priority for me. I also, um, initially thought about removing the, um, the parking spaces, but I did hear feedback from, uh, city manager that it may cost a lot of money. So I think we would need to decide on that depending on cost. I do like the idea of the parallel parking. Um, and also, uh, that would be, uh, an opportunity for food trucks to come up, um, if, if we do, uh, like Glendale Glitters or another, uh, community event. Um, the benches are important to me, uh, so I do want to, uh, I want us to have a plan for that. And then I- And then I, I, I appreciated and I liked Councilmember Baldinagro's idea about the pathway. Um, another opportunity that I see for a memorial, um, in these plaques is in Concept A. Right between the, the amphitheater and the library, there is an open space that is paved. Whereas in Concept B, that, and C, that turns into a green space. So that small green space right there could also be, um, used for a memorial. But I think overall, um, these are all great concepts. It sounds like we're all, uh, meshing and, and making some good consensus. But my confusion is that when we sent this to the parks, um, commission, we did it with the, the library still in the, in the middle of the park. And then we went out to the public and we still had the library in the middle of the park. And then we went to our library commission and we said, can you give us option, what options would you like? And they gave us, uh, keep in the park and remove to the promenade. So, and then also the city council here, just before this presentation, we decided on options one, uh, one, three, and four. And so I don't know how we move forward, but this is all just very confusing. Thank you.
I, a couple of things, hold on, a couple of things that I'm a little concerned with. It wasn't that long ago that we added, uh, charging for electric vehicles. I don't know what we paid for that, or if we actually paid for it, if that was paid for by an outside. Can, can you enlighten us on that, do you know? Was it the city of Glendale that paid for that?
Uh, is Michelle still here? I'll, Mayor, council, I have to get back to you, I'm, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, Michelle's right there.
Have to apologize, I did, Mayor, council member, I didn't hear the question because I was actually reading the APS contract.
The, the question is the, the charge, power charging stations along Glendale Avenue by City Hall, there on the south side. Did we put those in, or was that put in by, um, by the utility provider?
Yeah, so the contract between the city and APS, APS owns the chargers, the city pays the electric bill. On December 7th of this year, um, the city has the option of buying and retaining those chargers. But we can give them 60 days notice and they can remove the chargers at no cost to the city.
Okay, so that, that was the one thing I was, I was, I couldn't remember how that worked. If, if we remove that parking and we remove that electric charging, we're going to have to move that electric charging somewhere around the park, which means we're effectively losing spaces somewhere else around the park. So I, I'd really caution us on, uh, taking those spots out. Plus the fact that there was a comment made that, you know, it's not that big of a deal, people can, can walk a couple of blocks if they have to. That, that's probably, uh, factual, but if you're the business owner across the street that's struggling to keep your doors open, I don't know that's a good idea to eliminate parking that's in front of their business. It was stated that most people want to park as close as possible, that's fact. Uh, uh, other than Ian Hugh, he was the only guy that I would know would walk three blocks before he had parked because he didn't want to be near anybody. Anyway, that's, that's just a couple of cautions that I have. Uh, I, I really, um, as we sit here and listen, uh, if, if Option C has everything that Option B does, plus the gazebo, I, I, I guess I would ask everybody if we would all contemplate going with Option C. But if we can't find a place to put the gazebo, then just not, just not do it. Just not spend the money. At, at least that way we're covered for either way we want to go. If that makes any sense. Who had a question over here?
I did, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I agree with you if we're, because the, the, because the challenge of what, what the future of the library or where the future of the library is presents a, a possible issue with the gazebo, we could always put the gazebo in later if we decided, once we're, you know, finished with, with all of this. So I agree with you, I think probably most practical right now is, is Concept B. The only difference between B and C being in the gazebo, and I'm fine either way, because we're going to, we're going to have, you know, a new, basically a whole new downtown. Um, but I want to back up to the plaques because, and I appreciate the ideas of, you know, moving them here, moving them there. The, the, the sidewalk between the, basically the, the big sidewalk at the big, back of the amphitheater, basically they could be located in essentially the same place. I know the sidewalk, it's not a round circle, but between the amphitheater along Glen Drive, that curve to the corner, um, you know, the sidewalk is mostly in the same place. So I think it's, I think it's practical, I believe it's doable, to put this, put the, not move the plaques, to put them maybe not exactly, you know, in the, in the same place, but to map them out and put them in the same order and in generally the same location. I understand those sidewalks are going to be torn out, so maybe I wasn't clearly saying, but, but to me, that is essentially the same place. Is that sidewalk on the north side of the library that goes around to the corner there. However far they have to be spaced out, if they're spaced out a little further, um, I think that's totally doable. And I, you know, having people have to go figure out a map and figure out where they are. Um, I just think that, that like I said before, that these need to be treated, um, with the respect that they deserve. These are really important things to a lot of families, a lot of families that have been in Glendale for many, many, many years and have done a lot of, you know, things in the community. I think it's a mistake to just move these someplace else, just as a, for the sake of, you know, checking the box that we did that. I think these deserve more respect than that. Thank you, Mayor.
Who else?
Um, just one final thought, um, hopefully it's the final thought, is that the gazebo sounds great, and I'm not opposed to it. But, um, I also just looked at it and we have the amphitheater. And so, um, I'm thinking about what purpose would the gazebo have that an amphitheater doesn't, doesn't? And so maybe somebody doesn't want to get married and, or maybe Councilmember Baldinagro doesn't want to have his wedding in the amphitheater, but he wants the gazebo. But also you have the option to get married in the amphitheater if you like.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
I believe the, uh, one of the, one of the ideas for having gazebo was it was a meeting place for like small announcements. Whatever, whatever the announcement was made, and so I think that's primarily what the functional was that. Um, and I forgot to add one caveat to my, um, I got so excited about my future marriage, I forgot to add about the benches. Uh, whatever, I, I, if we can just keep this, this, um, skateboarders off the benches, I agree, sir. Um, I understand, uh, it would be great to, to have, uh, benches that are going to last a lot longer with, made by, by different materials with powder coating and that they're so soft. They're, they're not hot to the touch even in the middle of the summer, something really, really good. The benches being removed, I don't necessarily agree with having them put somewhere else in downtown because of just so many problems I can think of. But I would like to have them reused. Other parks in Ocatillo, O'Neil Park, um, Bethodonnell's Park, I'll even give a few, too, Rose Lane Park. I, I think, because then they're still closer by, where then those, now it becomes a, a, we're not getting rid of them, we're not destroying them, but we're reusing them, and we're reusing them to, uh, a park a little bit further away. Where now that point of pride now, that we had Arbor Day and that bunch of trees planted at O'Neil Park, now has some of the original park benches from the original downtown now there. And that's just something like a, a repurposing, kind of like a point of pride that I think would be really nice for parks relatively close by. Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? All right, so is there a consensus on Item C? If we can't find a place for the gazebo, we just simply don't spend the money, don't install it?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. There you go. What else you need?
Mayor, thank you.
Item two.
81st Avenue and Myrtle Annexation, AN-270, annexation located at the southeast corner of 81st Avenue and Myrtle Avenue.
Mayor, members of the council who provide staff report will be Sidney Tyrell, Senior Planner for Development Services.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Um, this is one presentation of three annexation presentations where staff is seeking a consensus for council to proceed for, with the annexation applications. As a reminder, these presentations are being brought before you based on the annexation policy that council adopted in 2019. And with that, I will hand it over to Sidney.
Thank you. Mayor and council, this is a presentation requesting consensus to proceed with an annexation application. This annexation is located at the 81st and Myrtle Avenue alignments for a half acre of abandoned roadway. Within the county, the property is Zoned R4, which is intended for a multifamily development. And the applicant is proposing to incorporate this half acre of open space with the like multifamily city zoning of R4. The open space is proposed to be incorporated into the area previously annexed into the city for the multifamily development. This vicinity map shows the site located approximately three miles west of City Hall. And this map shows the current annexations in the queue with the subject annexation indicated in red. This map shows that this annexation borders the city of Glendale to the northeast and south, and borders Maricopa County to the west. The development will be accessed off of Glendale Avenue via 80th Avenue. The subject area is currently vacant, as is the land directly south of the annexation, which was mentioned earlier, which will be developed as a multifamily residential development. East and south of the annexation are mobile home parks, while north of the annexation is a single-family residential subdivision. These figures were provided by the third-party company Applied Economics. And please note that the fiscal analysis report of the previously mentioned property to the south was revised to incorporate the half acre of open space. The one-time fees are estimated at $880,000 and annual revenues are estimated at $3,000. This is a graphical representation of those fees illustrating the $3,000 annual net benefit to the city. Should the council provide a consensus to move forward with the annexation, the next step is a blank petition, which will be heard at a subsequent public hearing for adoption. And with that, Mayor and council, we're looking for consensus to proceed forward with this annexation application.
Any questions?
I do, Mayor, I'm, just want to, so is this, is this, was this left out of the annexation of the vacant parcel to the south of it? Is that, because, uh, how are you going to get 75 units on a half acre? So I'm just a little, want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor, that is correct. Uh, this was a roadway that had to be abandoned in the county previous, uh, prior to annexing it in to account for open space for that overall development of 75 residential units.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Is there a consensus?
Yes.
You have it. Number three.
Saraval Logistics, AN-269, annexation located south of the southwest corner of Peoria Avenue and Saraval Avenue.
Mayor, members of the council who provide staff report is Alex Lorma, Senior Planner, Development Services.
Mayor and council, the request before you consists of a 39-acre property located on this, located south of the southwest corner of Peoria and Saraval Avenues. The property is currently in Maricopa County with a zoning classification of RU43, which allows for single-family residential dwelling units. Should the property be annexed into the city limits, the most compatible like zoning district applied would be the RR45, which also allows for single residential dwelling units. Once incorporated, the application, the applicant intends to rezone the property to planned area development permitting for industrial land uses. Such a property is located approximately 13 miles southeast of City Hall. There are three other annexation applications that are currently in the review process. The application is the one highlighted in red. The property is within the city's municipal planned area. Properties to the northwest and south are currently within the city of Glendale's municipal limits. The subject area contains a detached multifamily dwelling unit and accessory structures, which will bid the mall as for future non-residential development. Properties to the northwest and south are currently vacant and identified with a planned area development. The zoning classification, designed for commercial and industrial development. The properties to the east outside of the municipal limits are currently being used for low-density residential uses. During the rezoning application process, staff will work with the applicant to achieve appropriate development standards for the site. Through projects, through the project's development plan, said access is proposed along Saraval Avenue, which is maintained by the city of Glendale. Staff coordinated with a third-party firm, Applied Economics, to assemble an, an economic report consisting of estimated physical impact for various development scenarios for the subject property with a positive net physical impact to the city. A one-time fee for the, for the proposed industrial development is estimated at $3 million. In addition, the project's annual net benefit for the city could result in $200,000. The slide before you depicts development scenarios and the estimated annual net income, revenue, less expenditures per scenario. Depending PAD zoning application contains a conceptual site plan that depicts 675,500 square feet of building area for industrial use. The average of the hypothetical development scenarios, a blend of water, warehousing and manufacturing, brings forth an estimated annual net income of $200,000. To council direct staff to advance this application, the next step will be a blank petition hearing for public input only, followed by an additional public hearing for adoption. It is anticipated that the zoning application will be presented and voted on following the final action by council on the annexation application at a future public hearing meeting. Mayor and councils, this concludes my presentation. As a reminder, as a, as a reminder, staff is asking for consensus for, to proceed forward with the annexation application.
Thank you, Mayor. How did you know I was going to have a question? Um, I, so the, so is the PAD, is there a PAD for the, there's, it's surrounded by a parcel that is, is, is in the process of being annexed in, or has already been annexed in? That, basically that C-shaped parcel between Peoria and, and Olive that goes to Saraval Avenue?
Mayor and council, the property to the north and the east is part of, um, the Peoria 303 Planned Area Development that is already, um, which is an existing PAD.
To the west, to the west. So Peoria, so basically towards the 303. That's all, all yellow, that's already showing Glendale. It's already, you mentioned something was in the process of being annexed. I'm asking if that's the process of being annexed, or has it already been annexed in?
Mayor and council, again, the, the, there's a concurrent application with this annexation as well. The applicant is, uh, proposing to annex into the city limits and concurrently rezone the property once it receives the like zoning of RR45 to rezone the property to planned area development.
Okay, so is this going to be, all this entire parcel is going to be one PAD?
The property, uh, shown before you in hatch, in the hatch area, it will be under one PAD.
The entire, the entire, between Peoria and Olive, that going to be one, zone one PAD for like an industrial park?
That is, that is, uh, a separate PAD that is already within the city limits.
All right. What's the height going to be on this hash marked?
Mayor and council, uh, staff is still, uh, and this application is still in the review process. Through the conceptual site plan that is currently reviewed, they're proposing building heights of, uh, 65 feet.
Okay, thank you.
I take that back, uh, building heights of 45 feet.
Okay, that's, that's, that sounds better, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a consensus? Yes? Okay.
Three Rocks Mining Phase Two, AN-268, annexation located along the Aguafria River between Bethany Home Road Alignment and Maryland Avenue Alignment, approximately 2,500 feet east of El Mirage Road.
Mayor, members of the council, vice mayor, the staff report will be provided on this item by Dwayne Hoskins, Principal Planner, Development Services.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The proposed annexation is for a 39-acre parcel along the Agua Fria River. The city's most like zoning to the county's current RR43 is RR45 promoting very low-density residential and rural character. The applicant's short-term intent is to rezone the parcel after annexation to heavy industrial with a special use overlay for mining. The intention in the long term, after the mining is completed, is to rezone it again for mixed-use development. The site is approximately eight miles west of City Hall between the Bethany Home and Maryland Avenue alignments. This is a map of the current annexations and various stages of development. This annexation is highlighted in red at the bottom center of the map. The city of Glendale borders to the north, east, and the MPA boundary to the south. The county borders to the west. The site is surrounded by mining uses. The property bordering north and east was purchased from the city of Glendale in 2024 by the applicant for the purposes of mining. The site is accessed via a service road near the intersection of El Mirage Road and West Keem Drive. The intent is to mine aggregate for approximately 10 years. After the mining, the intent is to restore and rezone for residential, commercial, and industrial uses. This is a preliminary layout of the applicant's long-term intent. Single-family residential is delineated by yellow parcels, tan and brown for multifamily, red for commercial, purple for industrial, and green for open space. The short-term and long-term fiscal impacts were analyzed by the city's third-party contractor, Applied Economics. The short-term impact from mining is marginal. However, mayor and council, the long-term benefits are estimated to be $26 million in a one-time benefit and approximately 1.45 million in annual benefit to the city. This is a graphical representation of the long-term benefit to the city by development type. The blended average is shown in the box to the right depicting the annual 1.45 million dollar annual benefit. Staff seeks consensus to move forward with this annexation. If granted, the blank petition, public hearing will be scheduled. It will be followed by another public hearing for adoption of the annexation. If the property will be, excuse me, if approved, the property will be entered into the city 30 days after approval. Mayor and council, that concludes my presentation. Pending your questions for staff, also the applicant, Paul Gilbert, is here to answer questions as well.
No questions? Is there a consensus to move forward? Okay, there you go. Yes.
Thank you, mayor and council.
United States 250th Anniversary Event Planning.
Mayor, members of the council, here to lead staff presentation and discussion is Trent Durtry, our Interim Director, Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, council members. At April 1st, 2025 Budget Workshop Meeting, council came to a consensus to appropriate 250,000 to support the celebration of the United States Semi-Quinqucentennial. The council expressed interest in organizing a series of events throughout the year leading up to July 4th, 2026. Here today, speaking specific ideas rather than generic themes. And the floor is open to suggestions on these wonderful ideas.
All right. Well, I've, I've got a couple. I hope that everybody made some notes of what they were thinking. I'll quickly go through the notes that we came up with, and certainly this is not everything that's available to us, and some of them may get shot down, some of them may be spored, but we'll try. I, I think the very first thing immediately that has to happen is, is we need to come up with some sort of logo for America's 250th Birthday, along with Glendale's Arizona with our seal. I don't know how we'd do that. That's, that's not my specialty, but certainly we need to recognize that that's something that we're going to be working on for the next year, our semi-quinqucentennial. Did I say that right? All right. September 25th, I think we need to incorporate the recognition of America's 250th Birthday on pretty much everything the city of Glendale does. Any events that we have, I think we really need to be promoting that. Late fall of '25, I think we should start doing things like patriotic concerts, bands, anything that will support America's Birthday, patriotism, that type of thing. And I think we need to use everything available to us. Sora Ranch Park, Glendale Community College, ACU, Westgate. I actually talked with Westgate this morning, and they love the idea of working with the city of Glendale. They're, they're starting some things theirself, but that partnership, they were really excited about doing, working with Arrowhead Town Center. And possibly have some sort of Revolutionary War-type reenactments, whether it's concerts or out in the field, or, or, you know, see what's available to us. Maybe late, later in the year, maybe put on some citywide events, breakfast, you know, in the different, different districts. So that's something each council member could do, but we certainly should be coordinated between all of us. Real late, I think maybe start looking at some citywide events, barbecues. You know, citywide events that people can go out into the parks and not be burned up or not be frozen, but a nice picnic-type event. Spring, something I had brought up earlier, I, I think that we really, truly need to come up with an essay contest. I'd like to keep it with fifth graders, because that's typically in school. That's usually when they're learning government. You know, with maybe the topic, why America is the greatest country in the world. I would suggest that maybe we come up with one, one winner from each district. And I would suggest, you know, maybe some conversation in the future, you know, what do they get when they win? Well, my thought was, well, what if we send that, that kid and up to two parents to Washington, DC, maybe meet them up there, have them get a chance to tour DC a little bit, but also meet some of their representatives up there. Let them really, really get an idea of what, what, you know, what America is about. And, and daughters of the American Revolution, constantly I hear from them, we could possibly use them as, as maybe the judges to go through and, and read the essays and figure out. I would not want to limit that to just public school. I think if we're going to make this right, I think we need to make it for any fifth grader, whether they're homeschooled, private schooled, or charter schooled, along with public school. I, I think we should start trying to work with our professional teams, Camelback Ranch, even the Cardinals, to find out if, maybe we could come up with some promotions at their games, whether we're making a, you know, America 250 Theme Day, whether we're taking out American flags given to the people as they come in, or, you know, figure out some way to really promote it. We also have the Rattlers. I think that, I think they probably would be more than, more than excited to work with us for different things, whether they drop the price of their tickets for the upper level maybe to $2.50 in, in lieu of the 250. Just, obviously, I can't tell them what to charge, but, you know, offer some suggestions, maybe hot dogs for $2.50 or something like that. And then June or July, we have a place that opened up a little over a year ago that makes Italian ice cream, but maybe, maybe we could work with them on maybe having some sort of ice cream socials, but using them as a sponsor for that. So that's just a few of the things that, as we were sitting in our rumpus talking about, that everybody came up with, but I certainly would like everybody's idea on different things available. I'll open it up to whoever, whoever wants. Ray, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I don't know if I can add much, but one thing that council member Guzman and I talked about was that we wanted to see some sort of, you know, with, with the opening of our new campus, we'll have a new amphitheater, to really do something patriotic, something kind of big for the city to come and view, and maybe do it over several nights, not just one night, but actually do something that's really going to draw some crowds down to downtown and really celebrate the anniversary. That would be the one thing that I think would be a real benefit for everyone involved. And I think they'd have some good entertainment and become enthusiastic about the, the birthday of the Constitution. The Declaration.
Mr. Bolner.
I'm just going to read the notes we made together, myself and my assistant. 250th Celebration, when exactly this was going to happen, I, we didn't really pinpoint that, but just want to throw that out there. Starting the day off with a veterans' theme parade, food trucks, music, merchants, and more, root beer float trucks, snow cones, face painting, family fun activities, and in the day with a veterans' themed drone show, ideas for the drone formations, including military branch logos, American flag, fireworks-type show, bald eagle fighter jets representing Luke Air Force Base, the Glendale logo, I believe the 250th logo you mentioned earlier, Glendale History Slideshow-type formations, just an idea, some Arizona-themed things like cactus, Arizona, the Arizona State outline, Glendale-themed formations, music, baseball experiences, things that, Glendale, the Experience Glendale logo. Jenny did the hard work to find pricing for the, the drone show and other options of that, and I, I, it would be great if we could have something where it's just something big and robust where, when it's all said and done, the citizens, the visitors, the merchants, and everybody said, wow, they, the, the city did something really nice for us to celebrate this thing, so thank you.
Mayor.
Anything? Go ahead.
Hello, mayor. I have a few ideas that I'll go through. So the first is honoring America's Women. So America 250 Women's Leadership Luncheon to honor the history and the suffrage of women. Some other things include a drone light show for America's 250, a Juneteenth event, a festival, a festival and parade for America's 250th Anniversary, flagpole, flagpole installations. And so the flagpole installations could either be more flagpole installations in our, in our public spaces and our parks, or an opportunity to find a public-private partnership for veterans to get flagpoles installed in their homes. Also, American flags lining our streets in, in downtown Glendale would be great. A citywide events, we'll have a Juneteenth Freedom Festival next year, so we could invest in that. There's also opportunities for us to do an art contest and a, a language and culture exhibit of all the different languages that are spoken here in the city of Glendale. We can also provide mini-grants to either the districts or to nonprofit organizations that want to celebrate. When it comes to our education and our, our children, and we can have a America 250 Education Week where we provide guest speakers. We also could do a Native American Heritage Trail and Cultural Showcase, a Veterans Digital Archive and Honor Wall. If I had more money than $250,000, I would do a digital museum in the, in the, in the City Hall, showing our veterans that, that are from Glendale, who are living and who have passed away. And also a time capsule for the, from this one, 250th to the 300th Birthday. And I probably have other ideas as well, but I'll go ahead and give the floor up.
Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, it's fine.
I was going for Mr. Turner, but.
Well, he's not even paying attention.
Well, thank you, mayor. If you, if you're calling on me, I'm going to take, I want to take advantage of that. A lot of the other ones, ideas have already been tossed out, but I would toss out a few. I want to second the idea on the drone show, particularly in favor of, instead of a fireworks show, but let's do drone show. Incorporate the elementary and high schools into the things that we're doing as a city so that it all works as one unit. Like to see how we might be able to utilize our Cultural Diversity Commission, because, now, here in Glendale, there wasn't a lot of cultural diversity, but in the American Revolution, there was a lot of diversity, and I think that, that we ought to make sure that people understand that, and that might be a way to use that commission. One thing I've seen done over the years is, that I think is pretty neat, is to get a huge piece of paper that looks like parchment, and you print the Declaration of Independence on it along with the signatures. And then you, every event you go to, you have permanent markers for the audience, participants to be able to come up and sign their name below the famous names as well, and you end up with a, a continuum of people that are saying that, yeah, they too sign on to the, to the principles here in the Declaration. Some way in which, you know, maybe we could get somebody, a group or something, to do genealogy, quick genealogy lessons, so people could, you know, perhaps see if their, you know, if their family roots trace, trace back to the Revolution. We could give out copies of the Declaration and the Constitution if we wanted to. We could get a bunch printed up, you know, courtesy of the city, and make sure all the school kids have copies of that for their classes. The mayor had mentioned an essay contest. I had written down poetry contest. I think that might appeal to other students, so we could perhaps do both. That's, that's what I got at the moment.
Okay. As Councilmember Molner said, we had discussed a couple of different things, but I'm also in agreement with trying to do this a patriotic celebration to coincide with the amphitheater when we open that up. I thought of maybe a patriotic reading during the time that we're doing a program or celebration at the amphitheater. Also, an art contest where the winner, we would place the, of course, it'd be patriotic. We would place the winner's drawing in the new City Hall. I'm also for a drone presentation, or like, like they had out at the Andretti's. It was, that was pretty amazing. But that would be something neat to do along with the Fourth of July fireworks show, or even expand on the fireworks show that we do out at Westgate.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I wanted to clarify, so you were talking about doing something with the city's seal. So would we be doing it under the Experience Glendale logo, or the, or the Glendale City Seal? I just want to make, that's Experience Glendale's doing the presenting, so I'm just curious, I'd like to have a better understanding of what you were imagining of the, using, because the city's seals are more formal. It's not used very often anymore. We used to use it quite a bit, but now we use the logo.
Yeah, well, obviously, we need an identifiable, identifiable logo or seal, and, and I don't have a problem with that, but in addition to the 250th specialty, where after, after one year from now, July 4th, that won't be on anything after that.
So.
Just a temporary.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. So, I mean, for me, because the Experience Glendale logo was designed to be modified, that might be the best way to go, because the, the logo was designed to be able to do music, sports, and other things, so that, I'm just suggesting that might be the best way to go. And it also kind of, it gives an opportunity to present the Experience Glendale concept anyway, as part of kind of a side thing, but still put it out there. So I'm fine either way, I just wanted to make sure I understood. I did have some, a couple of things that I had, and I don't know, I don't know if this is possible, but, and some of you are new. We had summer band here every summer that performed in the amphitheater, and they did a patriotic, I know you, we attended those. They, they had a patriotic show that they did, I believe it was the last week that they did it. It was, I want to say Wednesday or Thursday night every week for four or five weeks. And a lot of people came out for that, and then the very last week that they did it was the week probably before Fourth of July, I think, and it was a patriotic show of the summer band. And it was, it's a very popular, it's kind of part of our history, too, of, of the summer band, so if there was a way, I think maybe the person who kind of rounded up all the musicians. But I think that would be really cool to bring back, I think we should bring back the summer band anyway, but to have that patriotic show kind of as the final show the week before the, the 250th anniversary would be really, really cool. I like the idea of multiple events around the city, I don't want to focus just on Westgate, just on downtown, I think the mayor's idea of, you know, spreading things out around the city so everybody can get involved and engage, and then culminating in one big event, wherever we decide to have that, I kind of think maybe downtown is the place for that, but I'm open to other suggestions. Then, I also had the idea that the city, we could also use, we owned, I think it's two billboards in the, in the sports entertainment district, those are city-owned billboards, digital billboards, that we could use, put patriotic messages, we could advertise our, our own patriotic messages and use it to advertise some of the events, I don't think we've ever done that. I know we get money when other people do it, but we could probably, I, I think we still own billboards, I don't know if anybody here knows the answer to that, yes or no, but...
The better our attorney does.
Yeah, somebody's reaching for a microphone.
Vice Mayor and Council, Mayor and Council, yes, we still own billboards, they are subject to agreements, which probably allow some sort of public service messaging, but we just, I want to make sure we're really clear, we can't just say, hey, put this up, we've got to make sure we are in compliance with the agreement, but yes, we do.
Okay. I, I would like to at least explore the opportunity that we could put patriotic messages, we could thank veterans, we could use those, if we could use public service messages, I think we should take advantage of that. And then I also had the idea that we could possibly wrap some of our transit vehicles in some sort of patriotic message that are driving around the city, and take, I don't know how much wraps are, I don't think they're that expensive, but that would be another way to kind of push the messaging out into the community that we're commemorating the 250th anniversary of our country. I don't know whether we could, you know, fit all that into the budget, some of the stuff really wouldn't cost very much, but wrapping vehicles is, is an effective way to get a message out. I mean, obviously attorneys love to do that, so it's certainly effective, they spend a lot of money on that kind of advertising. But if we could, some of our circulator buses at least, to wrap them in some sort of message, letting people know what we're doing, I think that would be a good idea too. So, I think these are all great ideas, I'm excited about it, thank you.
And the main thing that I, I was really hoping to get across is, is this isn't a July 4th event, 2026, it's from this July 4th until that July 4th, a whole year of us doing as much as we possibly can to get the word out, and, and start building, start building patriotism between everybody. Right now, this country is so split, and I think that this is a real chance to start getting people back together. There's a few, few of you in here that don't remember, there's a few of you that remember very well, but, you know, the two times that I remember this country showing its patriotism more than I can ever remember, one was our bicentennial. I mean, it was red, white and blue everywhere you went, and the other one unfortunately was 9/11. But I, I think this country needs that more than ever, and, and I, I, I'm very proud that the city has chosen to, to be on the forefront of doing things like this, I really am. The ideas that everybody suggested, there's, I, I, I'm sure there's a thousand more, I'm sure of it, but if, if everybody would, would work to, to kind of put something together, what you want to do in your own districts, what we can do as a city, and, and I think that we, we should all take the opportunity to partner with any business, anybody, any, any group that wants to be part of this, so we can make it even bigger. That, that's what my hopes are. Westgate was incredibly excited about that opportunity. They already put on a Fourth of July fireworks show, I, I know a few people know, but I'm the one that literally had bent Jeff Tietzel's arm behind his back and convinced him that he needed to do the Fourth of July fireworks. And the first one they had, they were so unprepared, they ran out of everything, their ice machines couldn't keep up, and after that, that has become normal. And, and all you gotta do is just drive within two miles of Westgate, July 4th at nine o'clock at night, you, it, it's amazing, the tens of thousands of people that show up. So, I, I don't, I don't want to cut them out, but I think there's great opportunities for partnership. Go ahead.
I'd like to make two more suggestions, so 1,002. The first one is a naturalization ceremony, in order to honor and welcome new citizens. And then the, the last one is an Honor Flight sponsorship, so getting 10 to 15 of our eldest veterans in Glendale, and doing a public-private partnership to fly them to Washington DC to experience all the monuments, and to do a send-off for them in a welcome home event.
I love that. I love that. All right, so what, what do you need from us?
Mayor, Councilmember, if we could just narrow it down to maybe 50 versus 1,000, that would be wonderful, but, great suggestions. If you could pinpoint your top five, I do hear consensus of schools and education, drone shows, Vice Mayor, to answer your question, the band, I had a conversation with them yes, last week, and they do want to come back, and they speak highly of the, of the program that ended at the Fourth of July, Karen is her name, and she's still around and willing to put that together, so I hope that answers your question, but if you could put your top five, and we will get running on that, but you just...
I, and, and I would hope that we, we have a lot more than five, because I think there's a lot of opportunities for very little money to really promote this. And again, every, every council member has no reason that they couldn't do their own event if it's a, if it's an inexpensive event.
And we do want to stay within budget of the 250,000.
Sure. That's per item, right?
Yes.
Miss Phelps.
Okay, where can I start? Thank you, first of all, for all the ideas. I would think we need to, I've got to think in terms of staff time, got to think in terms, are we using a grant model, are we, are we using outside promoters, and then how can we also address the seven or the six council districts as well? So, we'll get together and work on some ideas, but it may be that what we say is part of the 250,000, each of the districts are granted, you know, essentially an extra amount of money, and then you can kind of custom tailor some events by working with partners or however you want to do it. Then we can also then look back at some of the bigger, larger things, the bus wraps would be, would be one, would probably require some advanced contracting and utilization, the drone show, depending on the timing, you know, we could look into that, the concert series. But the, the biggest issue for us is going to be, what's the model we use to produce these, you know, from a staff time and perspective? So we'll think about this and get some ideas together when we come back from the break, maybe have, maybe, maybe a quick check-in at the next workshop to kind of say, here's some things we think are achievable. And that's the main thing, is we want to make sure that we can, we can execute on these things. You know, the parade was mentioned, outstanding idea to have a parade. And I know, Mayor, you know how much and how many volunteers and how many people it takes to make a parade happen. And so, you know, we have a limited staff within our production team, so we just got to kind of figure out, you know, which of these really can be done without not doing the other things that our staff are already responsible for doing? What can we do to maybe do a grant, where maybe we suggest, we offer up some grant opportunities for people to produce events, and we see who, what promoters and what groups out there would be willing to do something on a patriotic theme if we became the financing vehicle for it? So it's all, all we're doing is doing, so there's also a process in terms of doing grants and publicizing it, so we've got to think through how we execute on all this, but the ideas were exactly what we were looking for, at least to start, get a, kind of an A to Z concept of what you're looking for.
Mayor, I had an idea, first of all, July's not the best time of the year to have a parade, and I know how much work goes in, and I see you laughing, how, how much work goes into, but how about if we incorporated the theme into your parade that you hold every year around December, or at least had either the city or the Rotary Club or some of, what, somebody to, to even just carry some sort of a banner or something, a high school, whatever, of, of, you know, that Glendale's celebrating the 250th birthday of our country, and just incorporating that into the parade rather than having a separate parade? I just thought that might be a, a way to do it. Thank you.
You have what you need?
Okay. Yeah.
Council item of special interest, renaming of the Glendale Community Center.
Mayor members of council, here to provide staff report is John Kennedy, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Got you woken up now, all right. Here today, as, as mentioned, to bring back council item of special interest that was brought up in March by Councilmember Baldenagro, to rename the Glendale Community Center as the Norma S. Alvarez Community Center. So the Glendale Community Center is located in the Acateo District at 5401 West Acateo Road, so 54th and Acateo. So the steps that we took to, to follow the Parks and Recreation Policy on renaming, we conducted a survey in the end of May, in the first week of June, we mailed a postcard in English and Spanish, sent to almost 1,800 residents within a three-quarter mile radius of the community center. The postcard had a QR code that could be scanned and taken, we would take them online to the survey, you could also go to the URL listed on the, on the slide in front of you. Also, the postcard itself served as a ballot, they could vote and drop off that card at the community center, as well as there were survey forms and an entry box at the community center for folks to place their vote. So, survey results, we actually received a total number of 997 votes, 50 votes were received at the Glendale Community Center, 947 online votes. However, 794 of those online votes were duplicate votes from the same IP addresses. So, as, it, it, it solved our challenge by not getting a lot of participation, but maybe it went a little far, farther the other way. So when we narrowed it down to the non-duplicated votes, there were 203 votes submitted, with 50 of those ballots at the community center, and 153 non-duplicated online votes. So of those 203 non-duplicated votes, as you can see here, the spread for where those votes came from, almost 100 of them, almost 50% came from the Acateo District or identified as living in the Acateo District, a little over 40 either left it blank or weren't sure which district they lived in, Beryl District had a little over 20, and you can see the other, the other districts listed there as well. So their actual results came in as 115 votes for supported renaming the center to Norma S. Alvarez, 84 voted to keep the Glendale Community Center named as the same, there were three votes to rename for former Councilmember Tranquillino Garcia, and there was one vote to rename the center as Gilbert T. Lopez. So just in simple number form, 115 votes to rename as Norma S. Alvarez, that's 57%, 84 to keep it as the Glendale Community Center, and then the remaining four votes shown there on your screen. So this topic was brought to the Parks and Rec Commission on June 9th, their recommendation was to retain the name Glendale Community Center, and to, a way to honor Ms. Alvarez, would, their recommendation would be to install a plaque within the center to honor her. So that was the recommendation that came from the Parks and Recreation Commission. Another research that was done, if we were to rename the center and to replace the outdoor building signage, the estimated cost would be between 16,000 and 20,000 to replace the signage on the outside of the building, and if the option is chosen to create a plaque instead, that estimated cost is between 3,000 and 3,500. So with that, these are two, or really three identified options for council consideration today. Option one, retain the name Glendale Community Center and honor Norma S. Alvarez with a plaque in the center, or option two, rename the Glendale Community Center as the Norma S. Alvarez Community Center, or option three would be another option, as council might decide. So with that, be answered, to answer any questions.
Mr. Baldenagro, it's your item.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank Mr. Kennedy and his staff for all the hard work, thank you so much. I met with Mr. Alvarez, I had, I had never met him, and we went to his house, we spoke, and he was very, this had come up to me, to my attention by four or five different people and said that he had asked them, where are they at with this? I guess this was, this was initially, he was, he was approached about over a year ago by somebody else, and they, he, he and his family were under the impression, this was happening, when is it going to be done? And when I heard about it, my, my heart dropped, like, oh my God, here's, here's this guy and a widower, and, and expecting these things to be done, and, and nothing was happening, I was just, I was really upset about that. So, met with him, that's why I introduced this. He's, he's excited for this, I think this is something that, that we need to really do for the family, for Mr. Alvarez and his two sons and the, and the rest of the family, not only that, but also Norma Alvarez's supporters, she had a lot of them. I didn't have the fortune of ever meeting her, but I'd heard a lot of really good things about her, I did work, I did work with her son for quite some time, and he told me a lot of really nice stories about her. I've talked with the mayor about Mrs. Alvarez and, and several other residents within the community that hold her in, in high regard and with a lot of respect for the things she's done over the past when she was serving. I believe that the city owes her legacy as well as the family, this simple accommodation for all the years that she helped before she was on council and, and after she was on council, or during when she was on council, I mean. I believe this is the right thing to do under the circumstances, I believe nominal price and costing for everything, and, and that this is what I believe should be done for, to continue the legacy of Mrs. Alvarez. And from what I also understand, specifically for that building, from what I understand, that she was the one that was, that generated the spark to, to get the funds, I believe, from what I've been told by several residents, that she was, she initiated getting funds for that community center. I, I believe the conversation I've heard more than once is that the city told her, well, you come up with the first 5,000 and we'll figure out a way to get the rest, and she came up with the first 5,000, at least that, what I've been told repeatedly by several members of the community. $5,000 in that community isn't easy to come by, it's, 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 it's a lot of money. And so for her to be able to, to get the community to really buy into that, to, to understand why we need a community center there, is amazing. So I, I think this is the right thing to do for her and, and for her legacy, and obviously for her family. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor. I did know Norma, and she did, did do a lot of good work in the community, but the fact remains, I believe this is outside of our policy, we don't have any buildings in the city named after anyone, and for me, I think this is a really slippery slope, because this kind of thing can become very political. Unfortunately, that's just the reality of the world we live in, is this, things are going to be named after this person and not after this person. There's a lot of people that did a lot of great things in this city that, and how we've honored them in the past is by putting a plaque, we did Rose Lane Aquatic Center, there's a plaque there for Phil Lieberman, who was, you know, did a lot of the sweat, blood, sweat and tears to make sure that happened for his district. But it's still called the Rose Lane Aquatic Center, but there's a plaque there memorializing the work that he did to make that happen. And that's what the Parks and Rec Commission recommended as well. I still think it's a huge honor to have a plaque memorializing Norma Alvarez at the community center, rather than starting, establishing a precedent that we're going to start naming buildings after people, which I think is a huge mistake, because it will become political. Then people are going to want things named after this person and that person, and I just feel like it's a real slippery slope, and while I liked Norma and knew Norma pretty well, talked to her for many, many times after she left office, I think she would understand this, that this, that it's still an honor to have her name on the building, that doesn't mean that the building has to be named after, after her, for her to have the honor of having her name on the building. So, that's my two cents with, and just, it's less expensive for one thing, which I think Norma would have appreciated, and that it's also what the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I, I actually knew Norma very well, in fact, she, she was a nurse at Maryville Hospital and worked with my mother back in the late 60s and early 70s. Norma was one of the kindest, meanest people I've ever met in my life. She, she could be so incredibly difficult, and two minutes later, she was the coolest person in the world. But that was Norma, that's just the way she was, that's who she was, and once you learned that about her and accepted her, I'll make this statement, I'll probably be challenged on it, I don't know a council member ever that has tried as hard as Norma, I'm not saying always successfully, but tried as hard as Norma to do the best thing for her citizens. And I'll stand by that statement, she absolutely tried as hard as she could. I'm not saying what she did was always correct, and... I'm not saying what she did was always correct, and she certainly wasn't the smoothest person, but there was no doubt where she stood. Everybody knew that. I do, I do think that the plaque personally is the smarter way of going. I'm not worried about getting into a thing where we name a building and somebody else, I'm not worried about that. But just the fact that the sheer cost, and I think a really nice plaque, I think certainly shows the respect and shows the intent. And I don't think there's anything negative to the plaque. There are people that, if it was a plaque, they're still going to name that, that Norma Alvarez Community Center. They're still going to call it that. So, that's just my two cents, what it's worth. I, I'm happy not to be serving with her, I'm just not happy that she's gone. So, she was challenging sometimes.
Mr. Melner?
I would agree with both you and Councilmember Tomachoff, that putting the plaque on the community center would be appropriate, and for the same reasons. I think that's the way to go for right now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I can support the Parks and Rec Commission recommendation. I think there's a lot of wisdom in it.
I also would support the Parks and Recreation recommendation.
Okay, we have a consensus. Would you, either of you like to speak?
Mayor, I didn't know Norma, and I actually need to do more research about her, and I've heard about her and from constituents and from people in the area. So, I'm not particularly, don't really have anything invested or anything much to say, but I do think that with the respondents, it, you know, did show that they wanted it to be renamed the center. So, I think I will give my consensus to option two, and I know that's not where the council's going. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I think renaming it for Norma is listening to over 100 community members, am I getting that right? Over 100 community members to do that. The Parks and Rec Commission, how many are in there, roughly?
Seven.
Seven. I would challenge to find how many knew her more than just in passing. I'm going to gather that those 100 people that, you know, made the effort to do, to be heard, knew her more than just seeing her at a council meeting or something to that effect. If we're, if it's just a dollars and cents thing, compared to what we do with so many other items throughout the city, I'm not sure how this is the breaking point for that. And then, as far as, again, how do I say this? I'm just going to say it. Acateo District doesn't get involved very often. We don't vote very often. We just kind of like go with the flow. They do come out when it's important to them. When they were going to close some schools in the school district, I remember Landmark Elementary Gym was full of people, and they were up in arms about that. When it's something really important, the community hears about it, they get involved. I think they got involved this time, and I think we need to honor them getting involved, that their over 100-plus voices completely overshadows the seven in the commission, the seven up here, and the others that are voting for something different. I think we need to do the right thing. I really believe we need to do the right thing. And as far as this, I mean, it falls within the parameters of being eligible, from what I understand. So, it's not like we're breaking rules or anything like that. And this was not something that I initiated myself, this is me following up on something that somebody did and promised a family, that he was going to do this and did it. And I'm trying to follow up, because I promised that a family was, they were promised this. And I'm just trying to follow up. I believe, I'm just trying to do the right thing for the family and for her supporters, that, and there's many of them out there. I'm just trying to do the right thing. And sometimes doing the right thing is unpopular and not very easy, and it comes with a price tag, and we know what it is, but I still, I'm trying to do the right thing for the family and for her legacy. I urge the rest of the council and the mayor to please change your mind to renaming this for her, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, over here.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I think I am going to go ahead and change my vote.
Well, we're not voting.
I know. But I just want to say that there is 115 people that decided to take the survey, and like you, I'm not concerned about, you know, putting somebody's name on a building. She was the one that initiated the community center. It is a community that could, it could do a lot for the community also. I believe that Councilman, Councilmember Baldinagro is correct, this community, this would be important to them. They don't get involved in a lot of things, and maybe because they feel like the city doesn't care about them. This would show that we do, and that we value, you know, they took, they bothered to go and do the survey. There is 115 people that are for it. I will be voting for it.
Actually, you're next, and then you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, so there was also 87 that opposed it, and if you look at, there was less than 100 of them that were Acateo residents that said yes. So, there were the 87 that were the no. Then you had the Parks and Recreation Commission, which I just verified that it was a unanimous vote to do the plaque, including the Acateo representative. That was their recommendation. They're charged with representing the residents in those districts and being the representation on the Parks Recreation Commission. So, and I don't understand how not having a plaque is, having the plaque is not an honor and a way to honor Norma. I think it is a way to honor Norma. And I mean, I don't know, I mean, people, you know, I don't know who made the promise, I don't know who you're speaking about. I never heard anything about it. I've been on this council almost 11 years now, and this conversation has never come before us until now. So, I don't know who told who what out there, but this council never made any kind of promises or guarantees that anything would be named after anyone. And so, you know, and honestly, I really believe, and maybe the mayor could, that I think Norma would probably prefer that we didn't, that the money, the extra money be spent on the community center, and not on naming the community center after her. That's what Norma would have preferred. Maybe we, you know, and I'd be open to allocating the extra money in the budget to programs in the community center and putting the plaque up. That still honors her. I just think that, you know, you said 115 people, it wasn't 115 people from Acateo. If you look at page seven, it was, I don't know what the number is, I don't know if you know, John, that the bar is under 100, and then you have all the rest of the votes, which was 87, 84, whatever it was, plus the don't care, or whatever, however they voted. And then you have the seven Parks and Recreation Commission members who also said no. So, it's about the same number of people. And honestly, I mean, a plaque honoring somebody who served the city is a huge honor, I think. And honestly, I think that's, if Norma was here, I think she would say, don't spend the extra money. I really believe that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, thank you. So, I knew Norma long before she got on city council, and we didn't, I think we served together now, we didn't serve together, but had lots of phone calls afterwards with her. But, and Norma was great, and I don't know anybody that cared more about her constituency than she did and worked harder at it. And I don't want to take anything away from that. Norma was also employed in that capacity. That was her job, when she worked for the city with the cap program and all of that, that was her job. And I think that could be factored in. The first I've heard of her being the beginning, or at the beginning of the community center and raising money for it was here today. Obviously, I don't know everything about Glendale history, but if that's going to be a factor we use, I'd like to know that it was substantiated in writing somewhere or something like that. And then the other thing that comes to my mind that I think maybe puts things in perspective is, I can think of one other place offhand that is, the city has named after an individual, and that's Murphy Park. And W.J. Murphy founded this community, and he gave us that land. It took 50 years after that for him, for the park to be named after him. It was just known as City Park. So, if you put that in the context, I think that it should be a very high bar, a very high bar to have something publicly owned, named after you in Glendale. And I think the recognition that we've done with a plaque for others in the past that have served the community, I think that is, fits completely with what Norma's done and her scope of what she's done, and the timeframe she's done it over. I think that that's the perfect level of acknowledgement. And I think it would be a shame to go farther. And it's far better to have a plaque that describes the work that you did than just to have something named after you. And, you know, there's not many in here that could tell us who Harry Bonzel was, but we have Bonzel Park, or O'Neill Park, you know. Just naming it after you doesn't carry your legacy, but having a plaque in the building that people can read, and maybe adding others to it over time from some of the names that were mentioned that have contributed greatly to that constituency is the way to go, and I just, fine with Norma, just not fine with naming the building after. Thank you.
Okay, is there a consensus for the plaque?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there is a consensus for the plaque. Before you go on, though, I think that, once that's done, once the plaque's done, I think that we need to hold a special celebration, invite her family, have a nice event for that, for the dedication. Okay, last item.
Discussion regarding a services agreement for parking management of a city-owned parking lot, commonly called the Black Lot, located near 95th Avenue and Cardinals Way.
Mayor, members of the council, here provides staff report on this item is going to be Levi Gibson, our Director of Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Let me get settled in here after a long afternoon session. Today, we will be talking about a parking services agreement at the Black Lot. So, our agenda for today is we'll first discuss the background of the RFP, the RFP process, the proposal that the proposer issued, which includes some key features, the financial benefits, and some other benefits related to this agreement. The city has made significant investments in parking infrastructure as part of our economic development plan. The city receives direct sales tax on all parking revenues, as well as indirect sales tax, based on activities at businesses surrounding our parking infrastructure. This table represents a sample of the parking infrastructure locations owned by the city, the total number of spaces, the approximate annual cost for maintenance, and any annual direct revenues that we have received. In the table, if the approximate annual cost is blank, that means the expenses are covered by an agreement, or that costs were not being tracked individually by the parking lots. As you can see, we have approximately 568 spaces at the Bank of America Garage here in downtown, with an approximate annual maintenance cost of $175,000. We have received no revenue for this parking. We have about 1,809 lots at Westgate. The approximate cost of that was $5 million. To date, we've received no parking revenue. At the Renaissance Garage, we have about 900 parking spots. The total cost of that was $16.4 million, and the 2024 revenue was $202,000. The yellow lot located there in the Westgate area has approximately 2,710 parking spaces, for which the initial cost of the land and infrastructure was approximately 11 and a half million dollars. The Black Lot, which is the subject of this agreement, which also includes the pedestrian underpass, contains a total of 4,011 spaces, and the cost for that was $27.2 million, within an annual, approximate annual cost of maintenance of $210,000. And then also close there is the used sports field with a total number of 1,500 parking spots, approximate initial cost of 6.2 million, and an approximate annual cost of $80,000.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So, in terms of the approximate annual cost column, for example, the 170,000, the 210,000 for the Black Lot, what is the, that annual cost, what are those maintenance repairs?
Mayor, Councilmember Conches, that can be parking lot striping, that's sweeping, that's often graffiti removal, sometimes that is garbage pickup, utilities, that kind of thing.
Would it include any capital costs?
No, that's purely maintenance cost.
Okay, thank you.
The Black Lot was purchased as part of a parking settlement agreement in 2015, and construction was completed on the Black Lot in 2018. The total cost of the land and infrastructure was $27.2 million, which includes a $3.5 million pedestrian passageway, and a water line that was added for approximately $1 million. To date, no economic development or parking revenue has been generated at the Black Lot. So, the objective of our RFP that was issued revolved around finding the best parking management partner for the city, this city asset. It is expected that demand will increase with the opening of the Vi Resort and Mattel Adventure Park. The RFP looked to provide a balance between the benefits of a parking agreement to the city and the Westgate Entertainment District. Having a partner who understands the daily demand fluctuations, and perhaps the most unique aspect of this agreement, to understand and have the ability to comply with the parking settlement agreement. This RFP was issued on February 9th, 2025, and was evaluated by a three-member panel of city staff familiar with city infrastructure and its uses. A notice of intent to award was issued on April 15th, 2025, and there were no protests received.
Mayor?
Yeah, how long, I'd kind of like to let him get done, because we still got some other things we have to do today.
Okay.
If we could hold off on the questions until he's finished, then we'll take them.
Thank you, Mayor. The request, as part of any RFP conducted by the city, evaluation criteria is set so that RFP submissions can be evaluated and scored by the evaluation committee. In the RFP, 40% of the score was allocated to experience and key management team members. 40% was allocated to the understanding of the project, which included integrating into the success of the Westgate Entertainment District, working with key stakeholders, and aligning with the interests of the city within their proposals. The remaining 20% was allocated to revenue sharing or management fees cost. The panel that reviewed the RFP recommends Vi Resorts LLC as the most responsible and responsive. As noted on the previous slide, one of the criteria of the RFP was that the proposer had personnel experienced in operating large-scale resort parking. Ben Yu is the VP of Hotel Operations for Vi Resort, and has extensive experience in parking for large properties, including Windstar World Casino, the Wynn and Encore properties in Las Vegas, as well as Polo Towers in Las Vegas. Additionally, a partnership has been initiated with the Parking Management Company, which was founded in 1992 in Nashville, Tennessee, and provides commercial parking management, as well as valet and parking services for hotels, commercial lots and garages, hospitals, event venues, and many more. The company employs more than 7,000 associates nationwide. The company employs more than 7,000 associates nationwide. Specifically, the Parking Management Company has assigned Bradley Lombardo, Jeremy Larson, and Bernardo Pereira, all with a minimum of nine years' experience in similar types of parking arrangements. The city looked for a strong approach in parking management. This includes creating a synergy between security for the parking lot as well as the resort, creating a dynamic staffing model based on knowledge of events happening in the resort, and creating a high-quality attendee experience. The contract is slated to start on February 1, 2026, and the first term is 25 years with two tenure options to renew the agreement purely at the city's discretion. Total agreement term can be as many as 45 years. And one important feature of this agreement is that the city has the right to terminate or renegotiate the agreement with a 24-month notice to Vi. Some key, some additional key features of the agreement is that one of the most important features of the agreement includes adhering to the parking settlement agreement. The vendor will not manage or collect revenue on any NFL event day or any mega event day. And a mega event is defined as any event with 40,000 or more attendees. The vendor is also responsible for removing any illegally parked cars at their cost. Additionally, the vendor is responsible for the operations and maintenance of the lot, which includes asphalt maintenance and striping, trash removal and sweeping, utilities and lighting, landscaping, graffiti removal, and maintenance of two retention basins that border the lot. This agreement contains a fixed monthly fee of $41,666 a month or $500,000 per year. This amount will be escalated by CPI or 3%, whichever is lower. Using the 3% escalator, the total amount in year five will be $562,764. The total amount in year 10 will be $652,387, and the total amount in year 25 will be $1,016,397. The total cumulative amount received by the city through the first 25 years of this agreement is $18,229,632. This agreement has a guaranteed fee to the city. It's not dependent on the number of cars parked, not dependent on the number of NFL or mega event days that are excluded or unavailable due to the parking settlement agreement. And additionally, this agreement results in simplified reporting, and the vendor is responsible for reporting all sales tax on all paid parking. For the council's information and for the public's information, the sales tax rate for parking is 2.9%. So the 25-year financial benefit is represented under this table. And over the initial 25-year period of the agreement, the city will receive $18,229,632 indirect payments. The city will avoid approximately $4.4 million in operations and maintenance costs, as that will be assumed by the vendor, and represents a savings to the city. And conservatively, we estimate that sales tax revenue will be about $725,000 over that period. The total value is $23,361,152. So one of the things with this agreement is it shifts risks away from the city to Vi. Vi assumes all demand risk. Should the use of autonomous vehicles and ride-sharing increase and the use of personally-owned vehicles decrease, parking man, demand will decrease. Vi also assumes all supply risk. There exists a competitive parking market within the Entertainment District. Currently, there is parking at Westgate, the stadium lots, and other nearby parking. If those lots open and increase the supply of parking, demand at the city's Black Lot may decrease. Vi assumes this risk. Additionally, by agreeing to cover all operations and maintenance costs, Vi assumes all inflation risks associated with labor costs, lot maintenance costs, and utilities. In summary, Glendale has a history of supporting economic development within the city by providing, providing parking for developments. This agreement will provide direct and indirect revenue from the investment the city has made in parking infrastructure at the Black Lot. Council will see this agreement with Vi Resorts LLC on tonight's voting meeting. City staff recommends awarding of RFP 25-46 to Vi Resorts LLC. With that, we'll take any questions.
Mr. Milner?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you for the presentation. It was much more thorough than I had anticipated. I went through a lot of the, answered a lot of questions I had regarding the benefits and the cost, et cetera. I'm, after seeing this, I'm very much in favor of this, this proposal. And mainly because we're taking a piece of property, the Black Lot, that currently, that cost us about $27 million, but, and generates zero dollars, but costs us over, as you said, a period of, I said, 25 years, is going to cost us about $4.5 million. And we're going to turn that instead, we're going to turn that into a 25-year, $23 million gain for the citizens, for the taxpayers. I see this as a major win-win for us. I know there are some concerns about that we're giving away something to the Vi Resort. I don't see it that way. I see the Vi Resort providing us a great service by coming forward and taking on an operating agreement that may indeed generate some revenue for them, but it's going to generate revenue for us in the tune of $23.5 million that we have little to no risk doing, getting. Whereas if we went forward, say we went forward and decided to run this on our own, there's a lot of risk. There's, we would have to advertise the parking, we'd have to hire employees, we'd have to do a lot of things. So I see this as a major gain, and we've done it. I mean, we've invested in parking throughout the city, as you saw in the first part of the presentation, millions of dollars, and why do we do that? We do it so that we can continue to have economic development within the city. And if 30, if $30 million in tax revenue per year from the Vi Resort, now it's going to be more than that. It's going to be $500,000 per year plus inflation plus sales tax on those, those sales. So it's really a win-win for the citizens of Glendale because we're going to, we're going to be turning an asset that generates zero dollars, zero dollars, but rather costs us money into a revenue-generating asset. And I don't think that any citizen would be against doing that type of thing where we're actually going to be saving or gaining taxpayer dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got quite a few questions. My first question is, I'm looking at the solicitation, and the item number three is revenue sharing proposal. And it says right on here, please note the city will not be able to consider proposals that are submitted late or do not follow these guidelines. Number three is revenue sharing proposal. The proposal said from this vendor, we are not going to propose a revenue. They didn't respond to what we asked for. They said, we don't have a revenue sharing proposal, we have this other proposal. So based on that, it probably shouldn't have even been considered. And this isn't about Vi, this is really about doing the right thing as, as according to the taxpayers. The other thing in the RFP that concerned me was conflict of interest. Contractors shall disclose the following: the name and position of each contract employee subcontractor that participated in the preparation submittal or who will be involved directly or indirectly with performing the contract if awarded, the names of any persons identified, and the position of anybody, personnel that will have a financial proprietary interest in the contract. Well, obviously, they do have a financial proprietary interest in the contract, but they, yet they said they had no conflict of interest. That concerns me. Another thing in the Black Lot parking, and I don't know if anybody actually went through all of this, I actually read everything. This is the solicitation. The city required insurance listed, which was not provided in their response, business automobile liability insurance. They do not, they're not offering that, which is something that we required. They're not offering a crime bond for $2 million, something that we required. They're not offering errors and omissions insurance, something that we required. And they're not offering cyber liability insurance for 5, 10 million or 10, 5 million per occurrence or 10 million aggregate. That is something that we asked for in the RFP. None of those things were provided in the response. Next, I have the potential of this. Now, we don't know what the potential is for the revenue on this lot because the resort's not open, and we don't know how many people are going to be there. I, for one, hope that Vi Resort is going to be incredibly successful, and that parking lot is full. Let's talk about the proximity of the Black Lot to the resort. It's the closest parking to the resort. Somebody here today just said, I think it might have been Councilmember Baldinagro, people look for the closest parking spot. This is the closest parking spot. So I anticipate that Vi is going to be incredibly successful. We've been banking on the fact that Vi Resort is going to be incredibly successful and that cars are going to park in this parking lot and generate revenue. But let's just say that the lot's only half-full three times a week. Just to be fair, that we don't really know. If the lot's half-full three times a week, that would generate at a $30 a day space, $9.5 million a year. And we're getting 500,000 instead of $40,000 a month, instead of $40,000 a month. Next, we're paying for the 800 spaces in the parking garage that we, whatever the type of agreement is that we entered into with, with the resort, we're paying per space annually 937, just let's round it off, say $940 a year per space is what we're paying to reserve those spaces for whatever we think they're going to be used for. And we're getting back 124, let's say $125 for the space that they would be paying us. I don't think that's a good representation for the taxpayers. And with, if the potential is fully realized of the parking lot, let's just say it's full every day but event days, that's about 345 days a year. Let's just say we got 20 major event days that the parking lot can't be used. That would generate over $40 million a year in revenue. That's, the taxpayers are entitled to the money that's being generated off the property. They're the landlord. This is akin to somebody owning a home and hiring a property manager, and the property manager saying, I'm going to give you 100 bucks a month, and I'm going to keep all the rest of the money. That's really what this comes out to. The last thing I want to talk about is the exit, the 24-month exit. The agreement says that we have to pay for all. I was told, well, they have to get, remove their infrastructure. Well, actually, the, we have to pay them for the infrastructure. Anything, any arms or anything that they put up, we have to pay them market value if they, we want to exit the agreement. But it's 24 months to exit the agreement. Now, we all know about our management agreement with, for the arena that we have, and they've invested tens of millions of dollars, and they've got tons of employees and tons of investment in that arena. And let me, does anybody have a guess what the exit, that we have to provide them to exit that agreement, to terminate for, what is it, convenience, terminate for convenience? The arena lease agreement with ASM, it's 120 days, four months, which is a way more complicated agreement. And we could terminate for convenience that agreement in four months, and we have to give 24 months and pay for the parking equipment to terminate this agreement. Somebody told me that they thought this was an opportunity for them to be able to wait out council members and move in other council members to be supportive of their position. I think, I want Vi to be successful as anybody else, but I don't believe it's the taxpayers' responsibility to provide a revenue stream for them. I don't believe in subsidies, whether it's for a hockey team or whoever it's for. We've been generous with Vi, with waiving permit fees and other things that we've done for them. We've devoted a lot of staff time, we've been available day and night whenever they've needed us. But I think this is incredibly unfair to the taxpayers, and I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Did you want to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you. Come over here. Well, for all of those reasons and more, to put it succinctly, I think this would probably be right up there akin to our agreement for Camelback Ranch as being a rip-off of our own taxpayers if we were enter into this. I think there's a heck of a lot more money to be made on that parking out there than what dribble comes down to our taxpayers. I think the idea of a two-year exit strategy on something as simple as a parking agreement indicates that there's more than this going on. I could say, you know, we'd be in the agreement for two years, and then anytime after that, you know, we could have, we could renegotiate on an annual basis or something like that. But this is a 25-year agreement that, again, we can't even, we'd have to give two years' notice that we wanted to renegotiate on it. This is, I wouldn't do this agreement if I owned this property myself. Absolutely wouldn't do this agreement. And I won't do this agreement for my taxpayers, my residents, the people that trusted me when they voted me into office. This is a big transfer of money from our taxpayers over to an enterprise that I too hope will be hugely successful. I support them completely, but not at the cost of taking money out of our taxpayers' pockets. Parking was not a part of the deal that brought Vi to Glendale. If this was something that had been negotiated upfront, and we were all eyes open on it, fine. But it wasn't. They're here, and they're not, quote, entitled to a slice of the parking revenue. And we should be making sure that as much of that parking revenue goes to our residents as possible. And we're not talking about, you know, a million here, a million there. We're talking about real money, you know. Real money by the time this adds up. So I'm a no on it. And I also resent the fact that it came to us in workshop today for us to vote on tonight with a six-week break to follow. That's not how we should be doing the people's business, especially on big-ticket items like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to talk about a couple of other items that came up. I mean, one of the things that was suggested is that perhaps we should take over and have our own parking business. I don't know that that, that is what government should be doing. There may be, my understanding that none of the proposals that came in guaranteed any revenue. Is a sharing revenue, yes. The reason I am, another reason I'm very much in favor of this is because this proposal guarantees a revenue source, not a sharing of revenue. Now, let's say, for example, that we open this up and Vi opens up in there for a year, we get to see what kind of revenue they produce. So the first year, we see that they are producing $9 million. Well, that's awesome. At this, at that time, this council can say, we're giving you 24-month notice because we feel that, that we didn't get a fair deal on this, and then bring them back to the table and renegotiate. I see very little risk of the city. If we say we're not going to do this, we risk a couple of things. I think we, we risk the Vi Resort having to scramble to find parking space, which they would have to do. We would risk having to develop a new department to manage and staff and run the department if we decide to do this internally. If we want to give it out to another vendor, we can do so. But so far, the vendors that did reply, none of them guaranteed any revenue for us. So was it a good deal in that sense? Yes. Could there be more revenue? I would agree, there could be more revenue. But we do have an out, and it is an investment on, and a risk on their part as well to put in whatever they need to do to make this, this work properly. But I just, I just believe that we evaluate this, we put this into place, we evaluate it after one year. We then take a look at, see if indeed there is that much revenue being generated, then it may not be fair to the taxpayer, but we have a way to adjust and change that. If we do nothing today, I mean, Vi Resort's going to be opening up sometime next year. What do we do? Do we go out and ask for more, more proposals that are not guaranteed? The nice thing about doing it this way is it's, Vi Resort is, is engaged in the process, indeed. They want to see their customers have a good experience, and part of that is parking. It's kind of like the Disney experience. like the Disney experience. What does Disney do? They want to make sure that from the moment you pull into their driveway, that you have a good experience and parking is all part of that. Vi Resort will ensure that their customers have a good experience and that parking is all part of that. If they are not part of that process, in other words, we control it or some other vendor controls it, they have no say-so on the experience that that customer has. Is it prudent for them to be engaged and have this kind of agreement? Yes, it is because they will then have that opportunity, I believe, to provide that positive experience for their customers as they come into the resort. So, I get the concept that there could be a lot more revenue, a lot more, or there could not be. But we don't have to take that risk today. We can simply let them take that. And if, as a council, we decide that the revenue is too great, we have an exit strategy that is available. But they need to do that for a short time in order for us to even know if that's working. And if it is working and they are much more profitable and they believe they're much more profitable, and we see that they are, then we have an exit strategy that we can execute and bring them back to the table and say, "Hey, we need to renegotiate this." And that's part of the reason I am in favor of that, because of that exit strategy, that exit opportunity that is there, if indeed it does turn out to be as favorable and as profitable as has been stated here. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, may I respond to that, since he was responding to what I said? Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to get to you next, I promise.
Okay. Just very quickly, I didn't say anything about the city operating the parking lot and I didn't hear Councilmember Turner say anything about the city parking lot. What I did say was the city requested a revenue-sharing proposal. That's what we asked for. If you look at the solicitation, and that's what we got from everybody but the person who the contract was awarded to. So, that's why they proposed a revenue. They weren't asked to provide something that wasn't a revenue-sharing proposal because that's what the solicitation said. So, that's why we got that. I would venture to guess that there were conversations that took place before this went out and, because I know that this actually was about awarded to the same exact entity previous to this and then the RFP was redone and magically they won the award. And then I want to ask the city attorney, do we have any other termination for convenience clauses that are 24 months? Have you ever even seen one that is 24 months? And there's literally nothing to do. They don't have to do anything. We have to buy the equipment and we change it over. There's no loss for them and I don't know what the risk is, other than the risk to the taxpayer, that if Vi is successful, and I believe they will be, that they're not getting a piece of the pie. And two years is a long time to wait while the revenue's rolling in. And I've never seen a 24-month termination for convenience clause. Mr. Bailey?
Mayor and council, off the top of my head, a termination convenience clause is a negotiated term. I am unaware of another agreement where we would have, where we have actually that time period.
Thank you.
Mayor, and I also do want to start with saying that whether the contractor or the warden is Vi Resort or not, I just think that it's a bad deal. And I think that we can go back to the negotiating table and get a better deal from the Vi Resort. So, my question is, who is responsible for capital repairs and major maintenance of the parking facility over the next 25 to 45 years?
Mayor, Councilmember Conches, if it's a capital expenditure, meaning capital repair, that would be at the city's cost.
And what was the estimated lifetime cost of those obligations?
Capital. I don't have that in front of me at this time, but based on the initial purchase or construction, that was $27.2 million and that was in 2018 when we completed that construction. That included the land cost as well.
And so, does anyone know in the city staff how much it will be for capital every year or every 10 years or every 25 years? Anyone?
Mayor, members of the council, we had an estimate for what the regular maintenance of the lot was and Levi had that in his presentation. The capital cost, I don't have that in front of me. I'd have to get back to you on that. I believe we may have an estimate, but I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask is because we are signing ourselves up for 25 to 45 years of capital repairs and major maintenance. And the question was asked already about the termination and the 24 months, but my question is, will we have to reimburse the contractor if they build a parking structure and we terminate the contract?
I'm assuming you're asking me. Councilmember Conches, Mayor and Councilmember Conches, if I, I want to make sure I understand your question. Are you talking about if Vi builds a parking garage elsewhere?
No, not elsewhere. Here, let me just get to the point. The point is that in terms of Section 7.1, Page 7 of the agreement, and I hope that every council member here has read the contract, it says that, oh, I'm sorry, it's Section 7.3, "Compensation Upon Termination." "The operator shall be entitled to a prorated revenue and reimbursement for capital improvements. Even if terminated early, the city must pay Vi to walk away regardless of their performance or public interest." Is that true?
Councilmember Conches, the provision speaks to the fact that the $500,000 is paid on an annual basis. It's paid in advance. It's not paid at the end of the year. It's paid at the start of the year. So, during that year, in the event that there is, an event that would be a cause for termination, the remaining, let's say it happened nine months into the year, the remaining three months, because they, Vi would not be operating the lot, would not be technically paying us for that three months. So, we would reimburse the prorata share of what the three months would have been of the $500,000.
Okay. Sounds good. And then in terms of the duration of the extension, so this is a 25-year agreement that we're having in workshop today that we have on the consent agenda later tonight, and then the opportunity for two 10-year renewal options. So, that's 45 years. I know that a lot of us are not going to be here. So, I think that if I was to propose something as to not just be somebody who you all think is opposed to the Vi, I would say that we should look at something more like $800,000 a year in terms of their lease payment, a 50-50 cost share or some type of agreement on capital repairs, reducing that 24-month termination clause to a 12-month so that we can do the things that Councilmember Malnar said about reevaluating the expenses. And when it comes to evaluating the expenses, is the contractor required to produce to the city or to the city council or their revenues and their expenditures, especially for them and their subcontractors? Mr. Bailey?
Mayor, Councilmember Conches, we have audit rights related to this agreement. So, yes, we'd have the ability to see what was being...
And those would be on an annual basis?
It's not per se an annual basis. It's just a right to the extent that we want to audit the agreement. We have the right to do that. Could we do it on an annual basis? I believe that's reasonable. Monthly, not reasonable, but that would be just, we would figure that out.
And how will future councils know about these audit rights?
Mayor, Councilmember Conches, most of our agreements, if not all of our service agreements and purchasing of goods contain provisions. It's a standard provision that we require in the agreements that actually have audit rights. So, that's a matter of practice, but in terms of your specific question, how will they know? I couldn't tell you.
Thank you. And so, the other proposal I have, which is for a five-year initial lease with then the opportunity to renegotiate every five years. And then the last piece is that we're basically going to be giving, not giving, I'm sorry, let me, we're going to be awarding a contract for up to 45 years. And with all due respect, our city manager has done a great job of maintaining their relationship and getting this off the ground. But I think that if the Vi isn't even going to be, the resort isn't even going to be opening until the end of next year and we're right now in the middle of a city manager process, why can't we pump the brakes on this, table it, and let our new city manager negotiate the terms of this agreement? And with that, I yield my time. Thank you.
Are you done?
I did have one more thing, Mayor. I do have a question. Thank you. So, I'm wondering why the city's responsible for capital. All the capital is our responsibility. They get to keep all the revenue and we get to pay for the capital. And I'm going to read this. This is in the response to the person who, to Vi. It says, "Additionally, Vi requests that $100,000 of the annual payment be placed into an escrow for long-term maintenance on the hard surfaces, including milling, asphalt replacement, or potential reconstruction to concrete. If the city of Glendale chooses to pursue a concrete reconstruction option in the future, Vi will cover 50% of the costs proposed in the RFP. For the full reconstruction, concrete would significantly reduce the need for future maintenance of hard surfaces and provide a noticeably cooler environment for customers." Okay. Why are they holding back $100,000? That's right out of their response for capital when we're responsible for the capital.
Mr. Phelps, if you'd like to answer.
That is not in the contract. That was in their response. It's not in their contract. We had them change that. We said we weren't interested in that approach.
Okay. And this council spent a lot of time and energy, a couple of years, I want to say, in exploring the opportunities of going vertical on the black lot and having that generate revenue for the taxpayers. And I mean, this is, at least the way I look at it, this is a short-term proposition for the Vi Resort, not a 45-year proposition. I would hope that at some time in the near future, we've gone, we litigated over the air rights on that parcel of property to be able to develop that and generate. The whole idea was that at some point, we can generate revenue with that parcel and with the parcel that is still partially vacant. I was here, Councilmember Turner was here, when we made that investment in the future of Glendale. Mayor Wires was here too. And this really gets in the way of that because this should not be looked at as a long-term solution for parking for Vi because that gets in the way of us being able to actually generate real, meaningful revenue and build out the rest of the sports entertainment district. There's almost no land left there. And this is not, this should not be looked at as a 45-year deal. That is absurd. We just literally have been talking about air rights and being able to develop that recently. And this should not be looked at as such a long-term deal. I think we can do a lot better. I think, short-term, I agree with Councilmember Conches that we have a new, going to be having a new city manager. This Vi, the resort's not even going to be open. There's really no reason to be doing this right now. I don't think this is a good, in fact, I do not think, I know this is not a good deal for the taxpayers.
Mr. Gudman?
Mr. Phelps, is there a reason why we have to decide this right now? Are we at a time limit with the Vi Resort? Is the parking lot, this whole contract needs to be developed before the Vi Resort opens or?
We're just, we went through a RFP process. We awarded the RFP. We're bringing through, this is the standard procedure of how we do on contracts.
Okay.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I've taken into account many of the comments that were made and I still have to go back to my original statement that, yes, it is a 45-year agreement, but it's really a 24-month agreement because we can get out of it at any point in time. Some of the decisions that were made in the past didn't have these provisions. And I don't want to name names specifically, but you know some of the investments that were made by the city. There were promises of millions and millions of dollars of income. And so, the city moved forward and made investments in particular, I guess, particular buildings. And they didn't turn out. And there's no out. There's no out clause for us. There's no way for us to get out. And we had investments there that today, if they had made that decision, they had to invest taxpayers' monies to do so. We invested in the black lot as an obligation to fulfill parking requirements. And that's what it's been for the past few years since the Cardinal Stadium opened, or since we established the black lot in about 2016, I think it was. So, I don't see a risk to the taxpayer doing this because we are going forward with a, yes, it is the ability to have a 45-year agreement if the city agrees and continues to agree. But if we decide that after a year, no, the revenue doesn't quite match, many of the things that Councilmember Conches mentioned could be changed and we could do that, we could be back here a year from now, or a year from the end of this year, I should say, because they're not going to be opening for, till the end of the year probably. But once they do have those revenue numbers, this council that exists today will be here and we can question that and we can say, "We would like to see those numbers. We'd like to see where we're at. We'd like to know if this is a good deal for the taxpayers." And if it's not, we can bring back the negotiations to the table. I just feel it's very important for us to move forward with this Vi Resort proposal. Again, part of it is, they need the parking. So, if we don't do this, they're going to do something else to get the parking. They'll find a solution. And we may or may not gain from that. I just see it as a low risk, making this decision today, reevaluating it down the road and making sure that it's a good deal for the future as well. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Mr. Baldenegro, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I agree with Mr. Malnar. Councilmember Malnar, I apologize. The risk involved is, in my opinion, minimal compared to the guaranteed income. We will have the opportunity to reevaluate and renegotiate if we have to, to then obviously increase our interest in that. I'm okay with the way it is. I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, if I may, thank you. Having listened to what others have said, there's a couple more thoughts have come to me. And also, again, reviewing the PowerPoint, when it came to determining the criteria for the RFP, 40% of the determination was based on experience and key management team members, 40% on understanding the project, and 20% on revenue-sharing component. So, only 20% of the emphasis of whether or not this was a great proposal or any proposal was to be evaluated. Only 20% of the emphasis was on the finances back to our residents. And I think that's a very low consideration, particularly for something pretty much as simple as a parking agreement. Parking agreements, parking's not the most complicated thing in the world. It may be more complicated than, I think, but it's not nearly as complicated as, you know, sending someone to the moon or something like that. So, I think that from the outset, there was too little consideration given to our residents for their return on investment. The other is that, it's my understanding that the RFP was based on revenue-sharing. Companies, when you respond, you tell us that you can meet these basic criteria that we're telling you everybody has to meet, and then tell us how much revenue-sharing you're going to do with us. That's the point at which you're competing. But apparently, for this proposal, there is no revenue-sharing component. It's the guarantee of half a million a year, which I can understand, Councilmember Malnar and Councilmember Baldenegro, that guaranteed money is better than not-guaranteed money. But I also wonder if there's no money, how guaranteed is guaranteed money? But I'm sure there's not going to be no money. Vi is going to be successful. They're going to do fine. But the other bidders on this weren't given the opportunity to tell us, if you, you know, your proposal must include a $500,000 annual guaranteed minimum and revenue-sharing on top of that. Now, what would you have proposed? And when we had one that came in at 75%, they might have said, "Well, if we have to guarantee 500,000 and we're willing to share 75% and we think that's going to be, you know, 6 million, then, you know, there's no difference in our bid. You know, we know we're going to meet that guarantee." Or they might say, "Well, in case, you know, we'll drop our revenue-sharing..." Or they might say, well, in case, you know, we'll drop our revenue-sharing to six and a quarter, or $500,000, whichever is greater. But see, this doesn't seem to me like it was bid and competed and awarded on a fair level playing field. And I realize that's an important thing, to be careful if you're charging. I don't know all of the details, but sitting here today, hearing this information, and being expected to vote tonight, I can't guarantee my residents that all of the bidders had all of the information and had the opportunity to bid, all based on the same criteria. And I would, for one, would like to know, well, if the company that was willing to revenue-share at 75% with us, had to also give a guarantee, such as 75% or $500,000, which is more, would they still be at 75%? And if they are still at 75%, everything between $500,000 and 75% is money that belongs to our taxpayers. And that's the way that this ought to be working. It may say that we could go back after two years and blow this thing wide open, but if that was really the intent, and that's what people wanted and expected to happen, we would be saying upfront that every two years, the contract will be reevaluated and rebid, or after the first two years, and then every five years afterwards. We would not be locking our taxpayers out of potentially millions of dollars a year, based on, well, you've got a two-year period in which you can, you can give advance notice two years from now, we want to renegotiate this. That's just, it's absurd, it's unusual. There's no reason we have to do this tonight, there's no hard rush. It doesn't mean that Vi's going to have to go find parking somewhere else. We're not saying, Vi, we're not going to park your cars. We're just saying, Vi, we're not going to park your cars under this proposal. Okay? I think we all understand it's in our best interest, in our community's best interest, to park the cars, but we shouldn't be giving away the revenue, and we should all be absolutely certain that we're not giving away the revenue, not just kind of hunching that we're not. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, last. Okay, go ahead.
Yes. I do want to emphasize that, is that, once again, it's not about Vi, it's not about the contractor, it's about the proposal, and I think that I wouldn't have such a problem with this proposal if I didn't read the other RFPs. And I think that leaving that money on the table, I've done some calculations, that it's up to about $12 million that we could leave on the table over a 25-year span, and so what I'm saying to my fellow council members is that we, this contract wouldn't even start until February. We could go back to the negotiating table and say, could we get this, this, and this? And if they say no, then we can pass this one. What is the risk of going back to the drawing table in the next month or two after break, and trying to get a better deal for our residents? We talk about fiscal conservatism, but we need to make sure that we're actually getting every single dollar for our taxpayers, because they invested, we invested $27 million into it. And with that, I'll yield my time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So is there a consensus to move forward for this evening?
No.
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 Yes.
Okay, we have consensus. City managers report.
Staff, will keep up the report, please.
Summer is heating up, and so are efforts to shape Glendale's future. It all starts with listening. It's why we're asking for our residents' feedback in the 2025 National Community Survey. We're collecting input on everything from daily services to quality of life. Mail-in questionnaires went out on June 16th to a randomly selected group. Then on July 28th, the online version opens to everyone. This valuable input will help guide our work ahead. I'm proud to officially appoint Colby Brant as Glendale's new police chief. Colby has served our community for nearly 30 years. To say that he gets our community is a huge understatement. Chief Brant has risen from the ranks from patrol officer to assistant chief. Along the way, he's led teams in patrol, investigations, neighborhood response, and administrative services, which oversees training, personnel, budgets, and more. Chief Brant's strong leadership, experience, and commitment to public safety make him the perfect choice for this important role. Congratulations, Chief Brant. Glendale's field operations team is rolling in some big wins. They recently took home some top honors in the annual state rodeo in Tucson. Equipment operators and mechanics from all across Arizona faced off in timed challenges. They tested on safety, skill, and control using heavy machinery like bulldozers, compacters, and loaders. Robert Reese won first place in the compactor event, Rafael Jimenez placed third in loaders, and Charles Margalot earned an honorable mention in the bulldozer competition. Congratulations. We're helping our neighbors save water and money. Glendale's Water Services Department is expanding its rebate program, thanks to a $450,000 grant from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. Residents who get water from the city and are in good standing can apply for rebates on water-saving upgrades. These include converting grass to zero scape, installing artificial turf, or replacing toilets and washing machines with water-efficient models. The Glendale Regional Airport just got some upgrades. Crews wrapped up pavement preservation work on one of our taxiways and its key connectors. This included cracked ceiling, asphalt sealer, and new FAA standard striping. Contractors also milled and replaced two aging connectors. Pavement preservation isn't just about looks, it's an FAA requirement and a smart way to extend the life of airport infrastructure. A Glendale resident just became a first-time homeowner with the help of our Community Services Department. Jose Covedo spent most of his life in subsidized housing. A year and a half ago, he joined the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, determined to change his future. With guidance from our team, he took financial literacy classes, learned to budget, boosted his credit score, and even got a new job, increasing his income and savings. In April, he officially became a homeowner. This program is one of many ways our staff helps our neighbors build brighter futures. Thanks for watching, I'll be back with more updates when the city council is back in session in August.
City attorneys report.
Mayor and council, we have an executive session today, so I'll reserve my time for a later day for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council item of special interest, Mr. Baldenegro, do you have any?
Yes, sir, I'd like to see if we can revisit the Ride Choice program that was voted to be terminated last meeting. I'd like to see if we can look at that again and get to possibly reinstate it again. Thank you.
Councilmember Conchas.
None today.
Councilmember Guzman?
None today.
Councilmember Malnar?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
None today.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to support Councilmember Baldenegro's taking another look at Ride Choice. I was certain that the parameters for the program were going to doom that from the beginning, and then I have one of my own. I'd like to have the council bring back a discussion, now that we have a new council, on the limitations on residents for the number of code complaints they could submit. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Remove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion here, and not all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Ayes have it, council meetings resist. We only have about...